We said that last year, we said it the year before.
It builds a park, it's all.
Yeah, we're currently ranked incredibly high, top fifty in the world. And for our autonomous, we were ranked even higher than that in the top ten percent. And for this reason, we're hoping to do pretty well with this weekend. We have a competition at WPI. And because of how well our robot has been doing, we're confident that we might be able to qualify for the district championships.
So we're asking you permission to have an overnight field trip to Springfield, Massachusetts. First week in April, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Can I just have a quick, sorry, I don't, I didn't mean to hop up in your presentation. There was no sound on ICAM, but now apparently there is. But can you just speak into the microphone when you speak? It's not for us, it's for the people at home, so, but I think they heard you, but we all heard you, so, sorry. No, I, no, I think we're good. I just wanted to encourage you to talk into the mic.
I'm looking forward to it, but I will say I'm a little disappointed that you guys are placed so high in this year's public. You know, you're killing us to your own success.
Sorry.
And, and Ethan has the exact same issue at Whittier.
Oh, really?
Yes. He is a Ipsos resident, and so, yes, and, so, yes.
We also have a couple of homeschooled members on our team as well, so it's, it's pretty inclusive and it's not, we're not exclusive to people that go to Ipsos High School. They just live in the area and that want to participate in robotics.
It's really exciting that you have such a young, like such a good pipeline coming up.
A really, really good pipeline. We were expecting to be very good the next three years. We didn't realize we were going to be this, this good this year.
Okay, that's good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good job, guys.
Good evening, Dr. Blake, members of the school committee. A little more than a year ago, we came to you and requested a field trip to Yellowstone National Park to complete our course. And on March eighth, we returned. And so we thought we killed two birds with one stone tonight. We got a great opportunity here from two of our, the twelve who went on the field trip, completed the course. And, and we'll, we know you got a busy agenda, so it'll be a little quick tonight. And then we'll put together our proposal for the 2026 return to Yellowstone National Park. So without further ado, I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Hi, I'm Jake Petradellis, and I go here, and I'm a senior.
I'm Isaiah McKenzie, and I'm a sophomore.
And first of all, I'd just like to thank you guys for this opportunity to speak about our trip. And thank you guys for approving it last year. And I'd directly like to thank Ms. LaFrance and Mr. Krieger for taking us on such a wonderful trip. So, as you can see here, when we were there, we had chore groups. And we, us twelve students were split into three groups of four. And it rotated each day, we were each assigned with a mentor or guided. And we would rotate from cooking to cleaning to even QFK, which is Quest for Knowledge. So we would make a game, an educational game to play together.
We definitely did a lot of collaboration while we were in Yellowstone. There was a lot of working together to do our research projects. We got to zoom back to the fourth graders back home, which was incredible. They were, they just wrapped up their national parks unit, they finished up their projects. So it was so great to be able to call with them and speak to them about the parks, they were so excited. It was, it was really great, you know, living like communally in the lodge together, cooking for each other, cleaning for each other, making activities for each other, playing games. It was really incredible.
Yeah, so before we went on the trip, we actually went into Doyle and we presented to all the fourth graders. And they actually gave us a lot of tips for survival out in Yellowstone. They were definitely quite interesting, but some of them were helpful. They definitely did love the Zoom, we did two Zooms with them, and they definitely loved it. They had so many questions, they were so interactive, and we got very good reviews. And even parents reaching, the fourth grade parents reaching out to us and thanking us for that.
What was the final verdict on the name of the bison?
Greg.
Greg.
And the fourth graders named that.
There's definitely some perseverance involved. I'd like to tell one story about our perseverance in Yellowstone. We were very lucky to be able to participate in the Home on the Range study. Yellowstone, it's a study with Brown University, where we're studying the bison herds on Yellowstone. Part of that studying is, as you can see in the middle picture, that is me collecting a poop sample from a buffalo. And we had to persevere for that. We had to go, we were a little bit off the road, and it was in this kind of valley over this frozen lake where all the buffalo were grazing. And we had two people, as you see, left, it's one of our mentors and Hannah, had to stay behind and look through the scope in order to tell us if we were getting close to the poop. And that we observed. And they were giving us directions over the walkie-talkie the whole time. But we had to approach really slow because the buffalo did not want to move out of the way.
Yeah.
They were very, very incredible how close we got to get. It was incredible, this opportunity to do the research. It was really once in a lifetime to be able to do this, and we had to persevere in order to do it.
And if you see up in the top right, it's quite blurry, as it was hard to get a picture through those scopes. But that is actually three miles away, and we were observing wolves at very early in the morning. It was much clearer to us when we were looking through the scope. But that was a very amazing opportunity to see that. We actually did see a whole pack of wolves single out a bison, and they did surround it. But the bison did end up getting back to its herd and survived with maybe just a few scratches. But it was definitely a crazy thing to watch. So, critical thinking, this is us working on our research projects. So we had to work on a pretty extensive project, we were out there, and we would pick what we wanted to research. But like we, we had no computers, we had no phones, no electronics. So we kind of had to go the old fashioned route and dig through books and binders and finding old statistics and even taking, gathering our own. And like, for example, my group, we did a whole project on the migratory patterns of the bison and how climate change is affecting that.
My group for the research project, we were studying this one beetle in this pine tree in Yellowstone called the whitebark pine. And the mountain pine beetle that predates it, and we, it wasn't really like nothing we'd done before, looking at scientific papers and actual publications to analyze climate change and how that affects this one specific beetle and pine. It's really, really incredible to be able to do that, it's not like anything we really do at school.
And the slide in the middle there is us actually learning how to ID the bison. So before we had to collect their fecal sample, we had to be able to identify which bison actually defecated. We'd have to know if it was a male or female, juvenile, adult, or year, younger than the year. So that was us learning that. So creativity, this time back into the research project we did. And this was one of the research projects that a group worked on while we were there. And this was actually about the fur color of wolves. And in Yellowstone, they actually tend wolves to mate with the opposite color on fur. And there's very beneficial factors with that, tying in like disease prevention and other things following.
Wow.
That's all we have.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, on the heels of, on the heels of that, um, on the heels of that, thanks, guys, really appreciate that. And, you know, they thanked us, like, we have to tell you, you know, we don't know who was luckier for them to go on the trip or for us to go with them. And you saw the presentation was embedded in the successful habits of mind, which Mrs. LaFrance and I preach. And so really excellent job. We could talk and talk about this, but we really want to just kind of take this year's experience and build upon it for next year. So with just a real quick introduction for those who don't know us, my name is Jeff Krieger, I've been teaching at Ipsos High School for twenty-three years. I teach American government, criminal justice, criminology, forensic science, and world history. And my real role in the trip is to bring the civics to the, the experiential learning that we do. So we talked a lot about the National Park Service and with what's going on, you can imagine there's a lot to talk about. All the different agencies, Bureau of Land Management, US Forest Service, Department of Energy, and the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem. And so it was great to have that element, and then, of course, with the star.
So, hi, I'm Lori LaFrance, I've taught science at Ipsos High School for the past nineteen years, mostly environmental science, but also biology and marine and coastal studies. I learned so much from Jeff about the civics part of the course, it really made it come alive to me. And even the company that we went to with is called Ecology Project International. And they had a curriculum also that we followed, and they had already woven the civics together with the science. So it was a perfect merger. And unfortunately, I don't think the kids get enough chance to see different content areas kind of come together. And so it was a great opportunity for all of us, myself included, to do that, yeah.
And so to, to build on that, you know, Mrs. France and I are actually working on a unit hopefully we'll teach next year about Yellowstone, where the focus will be on the ecosystem and the science, and I will be looking at the civics related to that. So you saw from the gentleman, a little, a really good job of the new group of the week. But just to give you a snapshot of the week, we gave, there was an agenda in the field trip package, but we fly out on a Saturday. This year, we're fortunate to fly nonstop from Boston to Bozeman. And then they get into their groups, they start working right away. It's filled with collaboration from unloading to living together to cooking, cleaning, collecting samples. And then each day, there's something, the first day, we did snow science where we snowshoed. And they looked at things like the snow water equivalent and how climate change is impacting the Greater Yellowstone Ecosystem. We then did, did a couple days with, with the bison. And again, they, they sort of, you know, made it sound simple, but to get near the bison and do what they did was quite incredible. And the data, it's not data going into a project that, you know, we sometimes call posters in high school, dumpster projects, because at the end of the year, we dump them. This data actually goes to Brown University, and you can actually see online the Home on the Range study.
Yes, they've already been published in the Science Journal, also.
And then the wolf, the wolf picture, again, we talked a lot about wolves and the, the balance between wolves in the park and what wolves do outside of the park. And we were fortunate, if you want to talk about Rick.
Yes, so we met a legend. We were in a parking lot, looking through the scopes at the wolves, we saw the picture from the scope. And Rick McIntyre happened to be in this parking lot. Now, Rick was one of the people who introduced the wolves in nineteen ninety-five. And so he's retired now, he still hangs out, and he has clocked, what, ten thousand hours?
Days.
Ten thousand days?
Days, right.
Okay, days, looking at, at wolves, he knows all of them, he gathered the kids in a circle, spoke to us for about forty-five minutes, and just told us stories of all the different families. And it wa, it was amazing, amazing to see. We went to the gift shop afterwards, and he did a great job selling his books, we all bought. And there's actually a documentary coming out about him, so that we're going to be looking forward to seeing that too.
And so one of the things they mentioned was Zoom, what we strongly believe in, you know, we're only taking twelve students, but they go as students, they come back as ambassadors. And so the impact on the fourth grade went beyond the fourth grade classrooms. It went to parents, it went to other grades. And we did it with just Doyle this year, but we're hoping next year it will be Winthrop included. But the, the impact that they have goes beyond, and so we really want to stress that. Loads of small group of students, where we've been asked by Mr. Mitchell to have them, the students present to a faculty meeting. Other teachers have asked us for different opportunities, so you kind of get a sense of what's going on.
Yes.
Talk about the five majors.
Yes, yes, so, so for next year, the logistics would be very much the same. We are looking at going at the, the first week of March. Once again, the reason why we picked that date is because it's in between the sports schedules, so that we're not ruling out letting those kids who are competing in sports, they could come with us too. And so it would be, again, twelve students, and we would, anybody who is currently in the high school, who will not be leaving next year, is welcome to apply to go on the trip. And let's see, right now, we don't have a twenty twenty-six price on this, but the twenty twenty-five price was two thousand seven hundred ninety-five dollars. And we have been told, though it's unofficial, that that is not going up. So it, it should be, they should be similar to that. That program cost includes everything. So we stayed in a seven-bedroom lodge, and we were the only people there. So we have, you know, our twelve kids would not be with any other kids from any other schools. So there were the twelve kids, Jeff and I, and our three instructor guides. And so we all, we all lived together, and as the kids said, that they did all of the chores, which was lovely. So in addition, the only other additional cost there would be airfare. We, we were able to get, Jeff was on every day until he got a great airfare this year. We will cross our fingers that we will get that next year. If not, it might be an extra seven to eight hundred dollars, you know, on top of that, we're hoping not to go over that, that price for airfare. We have submitted a pain grant application, and we are just asking for fifty percent of our estimated airfare and the cost of the course, right, the tuition. Yeah. And, yeah.
Yeah, so, so we, you know, hopefully between what, what our two, five students sent and we've given you an overview of the trip, we're happy to answer any questions about this year's trip or anything about the field trip proposal, as I said, we know you have a busy agenda, so.
And one, one last thing, due to all the research that the kids did, they, they were eligible to receive three credits from the University of Montana. So for those of us in the room who have taken a week-long intensive undergraduate three-credit course, which, that, it was, it was that, so.
And three credits for a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah.
Not per credit, total, from the University of Montana.
I actually have a question on that, how is that paid for? Is that part of the, that's included in the, no?
No, pay the hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, students pay, okay.
Because not, not every student, there is work involved, there's pre-work, there's work, so not every student did it. So the students who wanted it paid directly to the University of Montana, hundred and fifty dollars.
And everybody, all the students that want, all the students that wanted the credits, were they able to?
They're still processing. Oh, financially, yes, finance, I'm sorry.
Oh, good.
Financially, yes.
Okay.
I have a question about the number of students. Is the, the lodge with the seven bedrooms, is that why the number is twelve students?
That's one of the reasons also, so Ecology Project International is a very small company. And they have like a fifteen-passenger van, right? So they keep it, they keep it tight. That is, that is their number.
And we all, they also like the, the chaperone-to-student ratio of six to one.
Yeah. Is there, do you anticipate, or did you have to turn kids away? I think with these fourth grade, you're gonna?
We did, so last year, we had thirty-five or thirty-two applicants, and, yeah. So we, we, we've talked about a process, but what we have done is we've talked to science teachers, social studies teachers about the students that we don't know. And they answer essay questions, like why do they want to go, what, what's a science project, a civics project they've worked on? So, yeah, yeah, we'd love to take more, and that's why we want to really make sure we bring it back home to as many students as possible.
Yes, and why we also would like to give some of those students who might not have been able to go last year another chance to apply.
Do you know how much the, the pain grant request was for in total?
Two, maybe?
Okay.
Small.
All right, any other questions?
Nope, that's it.
Anybody like to make a motion?
I motion to support the twenty twenty-six field trip, overnight field trip to Yellowstone National Park course on Saturday, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-six, to Saturday, March seventh, twenty twenty-six.
Second, by Jen, second by Jen, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, passes.
Great, thank you very much, thanks, guys.
Thank you. All right, next, we have vaping presentation and discussion, and we.
It's, it's more of discussion than a presentation, just in terms of issues that are facing in terms of dealing with the vaping in Middleland High School in particular?
Folks?
Hello?
Just a couple of things before, so, I noticed there was a girl who was, as I was watching the other presentations, I wanted to make a comment too. So I saw some eyebrows raised, like, why is a Whittier kid going? So robotics doesn't, they're not subject to the same rules, MIA participation, so I looked into it to make sure we wouldn't, you know, have to forfeit any matches or anything, so totally kosher. The second part, it's too bad you're not hearing, Isaac, the sophomore, was amazing on the Zooms. He like showed promise, I wonder if he might be a future educator, he was, he was that good. You know how hard it is to interact with people on Zoom? He was really engaging with the fourth graders, and they loved him, so it was really great to see. Anyway, so I appreciate you putting us on the agenda. I'm sure our student rep has spoken about how vaping is an issue at high school. I've said the same thing. We really need to have some, a concerted effort from school, parents, guys, anybody who can apply pressure onto this, I would say, crisis, not just here, but statewide and across the country.
It seemed like it was under control pre-pandemic, there was a lot of attention to it, a lot of education, the numbers came down. Then when the pandemic started, it was kind of forgotten, the education stopped, and it's back up. I think the kids were very young, they probably weren't getting the education back pre-pandemic, because they were in first, second, third grade, and now it's come back up.
And it's such a, it's a pervasive habit, because it's so easy to sneak in. We're not talking about matches and lighters and packs of cigarettes rolled up in the sleeve like in the sixties and seventies. This is kids with very small devices, can hide them in a lot of different places. And it's easy for them to get, and it's super addictive. I mean, Charlie's got some stats he might read to you later, but, you know, one, one cartridge in a vape is worth, what is it?
A pack.
A pack.
Pack, more than a pack of cigarettes worth of nicotine. And nicotine gets the brain faster than heroin does. So heroin use, if you're a heroin, I don't know if you're a heroin user, but nicotine gets the brain, because it's inhaled in a vapor, and it gets the brain faster than heroin does. Chemical reaction to the brain.
It's really a super addictive drug, and the, the act of vaping itself is a very social thing. So students will go into the bathroom, and they'll share vapes. And so it's hard, even if you think your kid is not vaping, they might be sharing a vape with somebody else. So it's really important to note, to look for any changes in your kid's behavior and other signs like that. So we need to have some education around this, we need to allocate some resources for enforcement, and then maybe think about some different support strategies. For one, we do find some students who are vaping, we can get them to stop.
And what I mean education, I don't mean in the schools, I'm talking about the greater public. There's a lot of PSAs, a lot of news stories, a lot of items that was, was very topical and on top of everybody's mind, and that's what kind of has come off the radar. But these companies know what they're doing, they're very good at it, they can addict you quickly, and then they have you as a customer for life and make millions and millions off of you. This nature of, you can't bring, you know, if you're a cigarette smoker, you can't get it as deep in your lungs, because you'll cough, it will make you cough. But with the vaping, you pull it into the bottom of your lungs, and it's sucked in through all the different, the old, I don't remember.
Very good.
Biology was better. Didn't think I was going to use that term. It picks you so fast, as Charlie was saying, and it's, it's, we definitely do have, we definitely talk about it, it's part of our health curriculum. We, in eighth grade, it was only in eighth grade, that was where the state had said it, so we talked a few weeks ago about the new health curriculum. It's definitely coming down to the lower grades, even to elementary with the new DSS standards. But some of the things that we do in, in middle school, they all learn all of the side effects, it happens, we, this is an example of other projects. All the different effects on the body, kids, you know, learn all these things, and they come up with these projects, and if you bite your brain, you won't. Different resources they could have, different texting numbers you can reach out to, and other internal resources. Kids definitely learn this. They always think it's all going to happen to me, though.
Or in my class, when I did health, it was that, oh, well, Oliver Burke was so much worse in vaping, vaping is the best of all the different alternatives, yeah.
That was, I know, I think that my son, he's twenty-six tomorrow, when he got to college, and he's in after in college, and met at all those teammates, they were all addicted, and they were so mad, because they were told that they were nice for that, you know, that was sixteen, seventeen. They were all addicted and they were so mad because they were told that, that they were nice to let you, you know, that was sixteen, seventeen, that it was a safe alternative. Because the science just hasn't been around that long and studied that much, but now we know how dangerous it is. Some of the things we're trying to do in middle school, um, in high school. We have a pain grant for more vape detectors, um, from the, everywhere. It seems like the bathroom is the most commonplace where you, privacy there. Um, that's one of the things we're doing. Um, we actually have a speech coming in April sixteenth in the middle school. Speech which each of our grade levels, uh, for mass prevention from youth. Corey Mashburn, who worked over the past, was just here, um, P is, we had him on the phone, talked to the staff. And we got him back coming in on the sixteenth. Um, but it's definitely something that is affecting the industry.
Yeah, it's very insidious, as as Pete was talking about. It started out as an alternative to help people who were smoking cigarettes to stop smoking cigarettes, but then those companies quickly realized that, oh, we can market this to kids. So we've got raspberry, uh, pink lemonade, uh, cotton candy, all these flavors that are super sugary that appeal to kids. And it's just a really diabolical scheme to try to hook the next generation of of users.
So we've, in the middle school, had seven incidences where we found vapes. That's all to seven, but I'm sure there's more, uh, definitely. But one of those families was very helpful and shed a lot of light on how the kids are getting them. We haven't talked about what we're gonna do.
Yes, sir.
So this one parent particularly was very helpful and ate her son's hell or everything and, um, Snapchat is used. So there's somebody on Snapchat who puts it out there, who nips which needs vape. And the kids don't know who it is. It's coming through Snapchats. It'll last for ten seconds. That's it. We had Bielak Park. So now we have a child going there with money without an adult. The person knows that. It's very unsafe. We've talked about this with the police. They can't chat. Snapchat's not going to reveal any sources. They have their privacy that they're cleaning. Just with that ten-second piece, it's it's gone. The students don't know who they, these people always are, from what we've heard. Um, but it's, it's, it's a problem, definitely. It's all over the, all over the place.
And it's an easy step to go from nicotine vapes to THC vapes. Um, and then from obviously THC to different drugs. So it's, it's a very easy staircase to fall down.
I know it hasn't been been published yet, but for the newspaper, it did a report on drug use in the high school, high school students. And it is so easy, so, so, so easy to find a drug dealer online. It is on Snapchat, on Instagram, on Telegram, on apps I haven't even heard of. And they have drop-off options, pickup options, you meet me there options, mailing options. I didn't know you could mail these things. And the shop they have, it's vape, it's THC. And then some shops even sell like tablets of something. I don't know. It's not either one of those things. And then even mushrooms, hallucinogenic mushrooms. So it's, it's incredibly easy to add one thing onto each other. And you can Venmo them, you can get them cash, PayPal. It's incredibly easy to to buy insurance.
This, can we ask questions? What is?
Yeah. Talk a little bit about the the vape detectors that you mentioned.
Yeah.
So these are expensive devices. We bought two of them to try them out. They're battery operated, uh, because there's no AC, no power in the bathrooms to to run those easily. So we bought the bait, the battery-operated ones. The goal was to try them out and to see if we could, you know, as as Ms. Chlor and I talked about, take back the bathrooms. Kids are gonna vape in a lot of places. We've heard reports about kids even vaping in class, like out of their sleeves, under their shirt.
Cafeteria.
So we, the vape detectors are about twelve hundred dollars each and there's subscription fee per device for the year. I can't remember what it is. It might be like a hundred bucks per device for the year. They're very technical, um, pretty reliable. Um, and they they get a notice on, we had an email notice and I just signed up. And when we first got the vapes, so I'm kind of rambling, when we first got the vapes, vape detectors, um, they didn't have the ability to text message. So if I'm not checking my email all the time, I might miss an alert. But now I just signed up for today. They've contracted with some company that can do, uh, SMS messages. I think that's text. Zep-tive, yeah.
Zep-tive is the company, um, Z E P T I V. And they have also have a dashboard that that you get to look at when you you see it, which is very helpful because kids are pretty, they know what they're doing. They'll bring it to their arm, bring it into a sweatshirt. This is very sensitive and starts to pick up a little trace. It doesn't, it has to reach a certain point to set the alarm off, so. Even there is some danger of expel, but not the alarm off. But as people move around the bathroom, they install doors open, it sends it upward. If they've contained it within their clothing or something, it eventually gets there and it shows you the point where the, where it's triggered on the alarm. So you can trace back time-wise to see when it was first, first particles were detected. And then we look at the cameras to see who was in there and you trace it back to see who it is, but.
So Zep-tive is a company that started out with bomb detecting, um, chemicals in airports. And they saw an opportunity to kind of take their technology and apply it in an educational setting.
We think it's very useful and, you know, we, Sean Fitzgerald and Lian, I think, helped with it as well, put a, um, pain rate.
So how, I'm sorry.
That's used in conjunction with the cameras too. So when the vape detector goes off, you get a a timestamp when that goes off by email. And then we just look at the cameras to see who was in the bathroom at that time, bring them in the office, search them. Nine times out of ten, we don't find anything because they're putting them in their underwear or bras or whatever. So we can't, it's hard to refind the vapes, so. What's that?
No, the texting one, I've not said it before.
Charlie's, Charlie's advocating getting those airport wands, like, real, real, real.
I'm just saying, I see kids stashing, like, when the teacher walks in the bathroom on the occasions that they do, you know, go stash it away.
So as I, as I've said to to Charlie and our student advisory committee, we're all ears. Like, if people want to start giving us names, you know, we're we're glad to start calling kids in and calling their parents, but there's a no-stitching culture that's really holding back our investigations and it's really problematic. So we have kids complaining about vaping in the bathrooms, but we're not getting any help from our students to tell us who's doing it.
Middle schoolers are a little more forthcoming and they've been helpful, um, which has led us to some things. And they're not as savvy. So middle schoolers, sometimes they'll fall on their.
Is passing time more, more problematic than?
It seems that passing time is is more problematic, especially at the high school. Now the kids don't have phones. It's hard for them to to coordinate when they're meeting in the in the bathrooms. Um, so they just meet in between classes.
But it's also the easiest time for them to get caught because students are comparing. The next class, teachers who want to be, I just guess it's, it's like, right, other students, so teaching, finishing one class and then is the next, you form a pair. And so you have to be going to the bathroom to check. Teachers don't have duties to do that. It's not their responsibility.
Ms. Chlor and I have been trying, like, in between classes when we're not in a meetings or tied up with other things, we try to station ourselves by the bathrooms, but we have multiple bathrooms and there's only two of us. Teachers don't have duties, so we can't have teachers stashed outside the bathrooms. Charlie, again, suggested today, what if we had substitute teachers? We pay a substitute teacher to stay outside the bathrooms. Not a bad idea, but again, it's gonna cost money, so.
How many more detectors do you need? Will they all be covered by the grant you put in? Grant request you put in?
Probably like eight or nine, isn't it?
Yeah, at least. Um, I thought it was closer to eleven. I don't.
The request would cover all of them?
There'd be one in each ba, boys and girls bathrooms.
The grant request, would that cover enough funding for all eleven or are you just trying to get?
No, no, I think it would cover all the bathrooms. So it'd be at least one detector in each of the bathrooms.
The kids know they're there. I mean, they're visible or they don't know they're there?
Not as observed. And they have, I mean, it's right now it's in a bathroom that our students don't, aren't able to use the bathroom during passing time. They have to get it from a class. So they use the bathrooms in our pods, which aren't, which aren't down here. But unless they're down here for a class or art, music, they're down in the.
We put them in the, uh, the main street because those are bathrooms that were both served by middle school and high school. And I was especially concerned about middle school kids being more vulnerable, so that's where we started. The trick is there's not a good camera located by the girls' bathroom to see who's going in and out of that bathroom. So the alarm goes off, we look at it, and the camera's so far away, it's hard to see who's coming out of the bathroom at the time.
We did meet with the company that installs different cameras the other day, so we have a great, great position, one in a perfect spot. So hopefully that'll happen this summer.
I would like to learn more about ways that we can inform parents about how they can make sure their kids are not vaping. So I don't know if that means like follow the money, like make sure if their kid has some kind of bank account, they see like, hey, where did this money come from? Where is this going to? Maybe just paying more attention to where the kid's money's going.
I don't know if there's a way to harness some of that tobacco money, um, that's for this purpose out in town. Don't we get a share of?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of that too.
That was, that was opioid, you're right. That was tobacco.
Part of their mission, the, you know, I was at the last RUBR meeting, um, the health director for our town, um, just thought a part of that money is for education. But I don't know if education includes heroin and, you know, vaping.
Well, sorry, but it's the start of a trail.
Um, I have a question that feels very very cold, but is to vape, do you have to be eighteen to buy?
It's a tobacco product, so yes, yeah.
So it's an eighteen, so is there a way, I think, when they picture it, to kind of deeper analyze it in the school? When I was in the school in the eighties, there was a smoking section outside. I don't think there was an eighteen-year-old meant to buy cigarettes or something. But is there a way, which one of the ways we say, the vapor will work here? And then you have kids that are obviously addicted. But then you have, they have a group to.
I asked, um, Joe Perna about the laws around vaping and he said it, it's not illegal for kids to possess nicotine, but they can't, it's illegal for them to buy it. It's illegal for places to sell it. So I, ostensibly, that's that's possible, like, yeah, I I guess they probably could have a vaping. I mean, we had, I was in high school, we had a smoking area outside too, but I don't know if that was helpful or encouraging. I don't, I have to research.
So the feedback that I get in my household is that the larger stalls in the bathroom are used by like six kids at a time than in thirteen plus. And not as obvious to the teacher, it's six different classes, it's not six people, they do more classes, you know, classes they need. And then somebody else needs to use the restroom. They have to make a choice, am I gonna go in there? Because there's six sets of feet in that last stall. And it's not just the vaping, but I, the word need is.
That happens too.
So my knee-jerk reaction is, do we pay a substitute teacher to stand outside and make sure that there's not six kids in one bathroom?
Yeah, there have been times when I've gone, I've seen six or seven kids, like, all right, you four out here with me, you guys can stay, take care of business.
Right.
And as one comes out, I have one to win. So, but yeah, it that's, that takes. Do you want to pay me my salary to stand outside a bathroom?
Right, but I mean, even, what I see the most is the new classes, A and E locker, those three pods, that's what I think. So if you just be substitute teacher just to, before the next class, you just go there and go in the bathroom, I mean, you can catch four back there right now. Or you can smell it coming from the stalls, like it's, it's not impossible to catch. It's just, it's kind of, it's a pain.
And again, it's, it's still hard to catch though because there's an expectation of privacy that kids have in the bathroom. Like, you don't want to have an adult barging in there and gotcha, you know, like, it's just not a good position to put somebody in.
Right, but I mean, nobody's going to the bathroom with three glasses and all eight in the bathroom because everyone wants to go, because all the stalls are.
You're opening up to kids making accusations about adults and.
So that, that brings me to, I have a few different ideas and this makes me so angry, not because, but just that this is happening and emotional. So obviously, the kids that are doing this certainly need help. The other kids, the kids who aren't doing it are also not able to use the bathrooms or they're, they're bullied or they're intimidated to go to the bathroom. So, um, I have a couple of thoughts on, um, on this. Um, health education is necessary. It, we need to, if we teach the kids the, um, the whiteness is terrible on their bodies. I remember when I was a child, thinking, okay, I know that. Someone said it earlier, not gonna happen to me, I'm invincible. That's just the mindset of these most kids. So I believe, what I, what I do remember was the consequences is if, if something happened in real time, just say, student A was caught vaping, right? And they know in the long term, it's gonna have an effect on their health. The kids need to see the consequence today, what is gonna happen. And frankly, when I was growing up, it was, you have to write a five-hundred-word essay and you'll be staying after school until that's been accepted. And you can, you can now go home. But I'm reading this and I say, an hour, stay after an hour after school every day. Write a five-hundred-page essay on whatever the topic. Once that's done, then you can go home after school again. I think to me, that is what students will worry about and not their health sadly. I think that's what they're focused on. Oh, okay, so I can't go to whatever else I'm gonna do because I have to write this stupid essay. Well, don't do it again, you know? I I I just, I I think there is something to be said about positive support. And Charlie, I know you mentioned the the pass program. And I I love the idea of that. Um, Charlie mentioned that it's not necessarily a problem for kids to go because I think it's during school.
Yes.
Okay, so they they don't have to go to school. They go to another one. They have something called therapeutic recreation. I don't know what that is. But I think that's something that we need to consider. Is this program working? How many years have, have we been partnering with this organization? What are the results? Are they getting the same kids back? As far as I'm concerned, and I don't know, maybe you are doing this, but they saved school, finished that essay on whatever topic it could be until that's done. And if you don't want to do that again, stop it. I get that there's an addiction to it, but they need something in real time.
Pass programs aren't open to middle school students.
Okay.
Oh, the vape day with ninety-minute detention on Friday goes pretty long. People don't like to stay on Fridays, that's why it's cut more bang for the buck. Or if it's just, if it's someone who's actively using it, it's, it's a suspension. Yeah, pretty immediate. I don't, I mean, the stories I'm hearing, um, in the bathroom, I, we're not seeing it as much in the middle school. But it's a different animal. They're a few years older and maybe more exposed to it, maybe more addicted by it when they're older.
What is, what happens when a person is caught? Like, when you do catch someone vaping in in high school?
If we catch them the first time, they do go to pass. But the second time, they're suspended for multiple days.
What are the school practices that when you ask feedback, you said, we don't do much, basically, meaning, I just honestly have a lot. Don't know what feedback that is, but when I asked you to deter, maybe it's.
I mean, it's, I mean, kids are gonna say what they say.
There was one kid, but it just.
They may not be a reliable reporter.
They may not be a reliable reporter, but if, the way he talked about it to them, he's very comfortable with it. It was not an enemy experience.
I think one thing that you brought up that I think is important is, we're talking about what's happening in the bathroom at that point. You're sort of at the final mile. You get there, there's a lot before that that we should be thinking about, what we can do to deter as a community and as parents. So I appreciate you bringing that up. One of the things we'll talk about later, but we're, we always have a section on student safety, what can parents do, a little bit of a call to action. This month, we've got a section about preventing vaping, which, like, to share with you, certainly get feedback. I think anything we can re-inforce, whether it's through that or other ways through the community, the reason we asked you here tonight is, like, what, what can we do? How can we be more supportive? What else can we do to drive? And so any other areas like that that you could share with us that, we're certainly all ears. It's why I asked about the funding. We want to make sure you have what you need so you can all be effective during the day.
Yeah, I think that's a spot-on approach. Obviously, prevention is always the best because especially with something that's so addictive. And just the the teenage mentality of think like, oh, it's not gonna, I'm invincible. This is not gonna hurt me. So prevention's gotta be the key. So I think the increased health curriculum at the middle school.
In the elementary.
In elementary would be sort of helpful. And I like the idea of having like a themed month, you know, maybe even if we do it, like, get our ducks in. And I like the idea of having, like, a themed month, you know, maybe even if we do it, like, get our ducks in a row by September. So when school starts next year, we'll have, hopefully, vape detectors. Um, it could kind of be a nice.
What about education of parents? Like, I didn't know that Snapchat is now a work, um, um. What about education to elementary and middle school parents about that app in particular? And how it's being used? Like, when you say, you know, I'll be at Bielik Park, that's ta, it, that's terrorizing. Yeah, it's so scary. If your parents knew that.
Someone there, they know they're unsupervised, they have money in their pocket.
Yep.
A lot of things that can go wrong.
Yeah.
I'm a big fan of dumb phones. Like, if we could have parents not get their kids a smartphone until they get to high school. Give everyone the old Nokia, where they have to hit the button three times to get to the letter J or whatever.
Matt, you mentioned the, uh, the culture around snitching. Is that a relatively new development? I mean, I know this is a different beast than before, but is, has that emerged alongside the vaping issue?
Um, it's hard to say. I think it's, the, the no snitching culture's been around for at least twenty years, but it just seems to be really, I don't know, hard to break.
Yeah. So I'm sort of picking out, is there an opportunity to sort of address the, that culture directly to the kids? To know that this is something that kind of has been around for a long time? That's a long term problem or solution that may or may not be useful, but I don't even know, that would look like nothing, but, um, you know, I think when it comes from the kids, it typically carries a lot more weight, and they, they clearly must feel some level of impunity to be doing this, sort of raising it as they're doing. Um, but again, I don't know what that would look like, that's not very.
I, I think, like, an anonymous tip line would be great, and especially if we said something like, if, if any names you submit, they won't be in trouble, they're just going to try to get directed towards help. And I, I think the parents would be the first point of contact, say, hey, your kid's name came up six times in this anonymous reporter line. You might want to check out his bank account, his, you know, his, check his room, you know, I, I don't know. Again, I, I think I have to do some more research on, like, some effective strategies for parents to, so we can pass those strategies on.
Next Friday, there's a state law called ESPT. I don't know what the acronym stands for, but it's a lot of questions, and every seventh grader in the state goes through it. And we're doing ours, um, on next Friday, on the twenty eighth. So our seventh graders are all being interviewed anonymously. We'll get the data back, just to see how much they ask a lot of questions about many topics. Um, we sent all this home, um, a few, we, a few months ago, a month ago, about when it's going to happen. I have not got all that. No one's opted out yet, so hopefully, everyone will take it truthfully, knowing that it's anonymous, and we can kind of see, at least at the seventh grade level, how big of an issue it is. You know, it's.
Brief intervention.
Yes, the youth's sort of, it's, there's a Y in it, right? Like, is that the same B? Uh, maybe they changed it. I thought it used to be B R Y. That's something different?
That's the. No, it's the, um, end of the, we give it at the end of the year.
It's the behavioral youth risk, yeah.
Y R B S.
Yeah. Well, we're obviously, I mean, we're not going to solve this tonight. I think it's really helpful to sort of know the state of things in both buildings. Um, I like what Sasha said about the, I mean, we can certainly work on the communication piece out to the district, I think, through our newsletters. Um, I think the leadership team could do outreach at all levels. You know, I think maybe we need, like, a little task force to kind of tackle the, all the different pieces that need to be done. Because I think the, you know, I remember in the, I don't regularly read the elementary newsletters anymore, but I know when I used to get them as a parent, there was little sort of blurbs about stuff, whether it's parenting, or just, you know, advice, or sort of, that sort of information could be worked into the newsletters periodically, I think. Whether it's stuff about social media, or, um, I don't know. I think there's things, there's a lot of sort of multi-pronged things we could do. And I think it would be worth it to, at least at the high school level, look at the disciplinary policy and think about, is there any disciplinary things we want to change in the handbook for next year about potentially? Like, is the pass program working? Is there something better? Do we want to be more strict with the consequences? Because I agree with Jenny, you know, I think that's a, could be a deterrent for kids to know that, to, to really send the message that this is wrong, this is not acceptable, this is harmful to your health, it's addictive.
We'd have to look at in school suspension as a possibility. With the new regulations, we're supposed to explore all alternatives to external suspensions, so that's why we went to pass, because they were out of school.
Right.
But yet, you know.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're just looking at that and making sure that that's the best, um, that's, that's the best choice, and maybe look at some other consequences to change in the handbook for next year.
I mean, the handbook is already really strict. I mean, MIA is super strict with their code using drugs, and there's what's in this section.
Yeah, but that's athletes, and that's, yeah.
No, that's not true. Last, the last year, our, our handbook rules applied to all extracurricular activities, not just athletes.
Yep.
Twenty-five percent of the season, et cetera. It was, it was a long year.
Yeah.
MIA changes.
But thank you for the. I mean, it's, yeah.
And then, Bruce Park also, I think, for, for this department for, uh.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to, to see if there's some kind of way we could get what Mr. Joffe's talking about with how easy it is for them to get these things through social media. If we could have some, a police officer poses like a kid, and then roll up to Bielik Park, you know, and bust people.
It's one other idea.
I've seen too many TV movies.
One other idea I just had is, I mean, could the, the fries groups or the s- school councils at the middle school or high school organize any kind of, um, you know, is there a documentary or something? Sometimes those things are really powerful for parents to have, to put in, in the pack one night, um, to just educate parents.
We have coming in mass prevention, prevention for youth. They do, they do programs for parents as well.
Yeah, so I mean, I think those kinds of things that, you know, I went to years back on social media, that's really, it's, those things are really eye opening for parents.
He was in this fall when we had our PD day.
Okay.
One of our presentations.
Okay.
We definitely do that for parents.
Yeah, I think it's really, because I think a lot of parents would probably be shocked at what's happening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right.
I may need some technical.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
At least in my log, I don't believe I'd say I don't want to hear two.
See, you need the mic, too? Will he need the mic moved over? Yeah.
So, thank you for having me this evening. Um, for those members of the committee who don't know me, I'm Chris Carroll. And I, we have the first sponsor, Article twenty-one on the town board. So the, maybe it's not me. Article twenty-one, uh, is here, uh, reading it. Because of the long list of capital projects, the hits, the choices, and the criticality of identifying the most cost effective means of leaving these essential projects. This article requests that the town meeting express its desire to follow. For any proposed school building or school renovation project in Ipswich, full consideration must be given to participation in the Massachusetts School Building Authority's model school program in order to reduce costs for the town. Full consideration shall include, but not limited to, requesting consideration by the NSBA in their model school program during the NSBA's feasibility study. Providing a detailed written cost analysis comparing large and small custom designed schools to specific NSBA model schools of similar size that can be accommodated on the way on site. And three, presenting this analysis for review and comment at the public hearing consistently with good behavior. Um, a little bit about me that is relevant to this discussion tonight. I have two students currently, um, in seventh grade at Ipswich Middle School. About my personal background, I have five years of experience in construction management. Um, I have twenty years of experience in commercial estate as a broker. Um, and I have represented nonprofits in identifying and acquiring properties necessary in further their core mission. Um, the most, uh, successful, I feel, and certainly the most fun for me, was working with Boston Village Charter School in the acquisition of an industrial property right next to Ninety-three, across from the Globe Site, that they successfully ran into their second school campus at two fifteen Sydney Street in Dorchester. And I would be remiss if I did not point out that I had the pleasure of working with Ipswich resident Carol Perry at St. Um, and he was the chair of the board at the time, along with Captain Solomon, who was the head school. And that was really, uh, that was a wonderful experience. So, reasons behind Article twenty-one. Uh, the town, as we know, is facing a long list of capital projects, uh, coming in. Public safety building, more than twenty-five million, that is now, uh, hopefully in the process of eventual reform, but it's going to solve. New water treatment plants at thirty-five million dollars. Replacing school facilities for eight hundred plus elementary school students. Uh, I have it here listed, recently estimated at a hundred million dollars. Uh, I understand that estimate has recently risen to a hundred and fifty million. So, a lot of money, a lot of things coming down the line. Due to the higher estimated cost, it is especially important that each one of these projects are able to garner necessary voter support at town meeting, because there's a lot of stuff that we're going to have to pay for. And the town is basically enabled from the state, um, for affordable housing. And there is a strong regard for sentiment in this town to try as possible to preserve affordability. It is becoming an expensive town meeting. Um, for these reasons, it is very important that every cost saving measure that does not sacrifice the ability to accomplish the task before us must be considered. The residents of Ipswich are about to be overwhelmed with capital project requests, and we just need to make sure that the new classrooms for Asper's children remains a top priority in their minds. The NSBA's model school program. Most Ipswich residents are unfamiliar with Massachusetts School Building Authority, and that's not really a surprise. Um, but they are even less familiar with the NSBA's model school program in particular. The model school program's quoted intent is, simply put, savings through innovation. And according from the NSBA's website, the model school program is quote, seeks to effectively adapt and reuse the design of successful, recently construction pre-cane through, uh, twelfth grade models. Model schools are efficient in design and easy to maintain, contain optimal classroom and lab space, can easily accommodate higher or lower enrollments, incorporate sustainable green design elements when possible, and are flexible in educational programming spaces while encouraging community use. The NSBA's model school program, its website highlights several goals of the program directly related to cost savings, ability to allow for compressed project schedules and accelerated construction start times, thus reducing uncertainty of inflation in construction and project cost, ability to shorten and streamline the design process to reduce design fees, and ability to enhance predictability of project costs and performance, resulting in improved quality control and reduced change orders. So, again, off the NSBA's model school program, uh, off the NSBA's website, the model school program, the following was presented in, you know, November twenty twenty-three at Massachusetts Association of School Committees. Um, having the program and its ability to s- to see firsthand what the building will look like, and it's demonstrated functionality is impactful for those who make the sign to build it. You can actually walk through the building that you're going to be building. You can make decisions about whether this works, because you can physically take the tour. Press, as I said before, compressed project schedules and accelerated constructions start times serve to reduce the uncertainty of inflation in construction and project cost. And lastly, uh, they pointed out that the NSBA has added six new elementary schools to the options available to school districts. Um, I mentioned this one only because there was some thought that the NSBA perhaps had not been as focused in this program, but actually in twenty twenty-three, they added six additional schools. So, because by policy, the NSBA does not participate in the process of a school district, it therefore requests the consideration of the model school program initiated by the school district, with the NSBA inviting the district into its model school program upon request. An important point, obviously, because in order to participate, they do not want to get involved in this sort of politics. That's not their interest, they don't want to tell any district what to do. But if the district decides that it wants to participate in the program, they will then look at this, invite it in, and then a decision between the district and the NSBA will be made. Is this the right fit based on your needs? So, in order to, this open as an option, the town needs to formally ask to be included in the program. Um, so this article seeks to ensure any careful and thorough evaluation of all model school options is therefore guaranteed. In summary, on Article twenty-one, this article does not place restrictions on the town's decision making builders. It also does not delay the timeline to the start of construction. Purpose Article twenty-one is to ensure that the NSBA's model school program is understood and thoroughly considered as an option by both voters and town officials. And Article twenty-one aims to further town consensus to support construction of much needed classroom spaces for the children and teachers at our two current elementary schools, whose enrollment numbers are expected to approach, to approach rather than be current students. So, I appreciate the opportunity to, to you tonight to, um, to explain why Article twenty-one is in current warrant. Um, if there are any questions at this time, or if you have a try and answer. Uh, we also copy that you're saying, in my experience, sometimes the best questions come an hour after the meeting's over, or the next morning when you're driving in. So you have a copy of my contact information, and I would be happy to discuss this if it is up. And if there are any questions on, I think, was there a name?
I'll make just maybe a comment. Mr. Joffe, appreciate the presentation, the thoughtfulness of it, and thank you for joining us. I think it's particularly helpful rather than just reading through it. I understand the spirit of the keeping the cost down, everyone at this table feels the same way. My concern is, um, not specifically the language used in there. I'm thinking sort of the broader implications of it. I'm concerned that signals an expectation or commitment to the town that we've already decided to go through a model school project. One concern there is, there are those that are lobbying for two schools that see a model school as a way to build two schools, even though it's more expensive. I'm concerned it signals that we would go down that path should, uh, we support or explicitly state that. You know, it's something we can direct the. You know, it's something we can direct the MSBA to do, to evaluate, which I think certainly makes sense for us to truly understand. On the surface, I like that. Of the, I don't have the exact number in front of me. I think of the sixty-one elementary schools built since twenty-fourteen, there's only one that went through the model school process. So, a little concerned about that. They're, part of the reason is that they guide towards a certain class size, so it's around, you know, the ones that I've seen are around thirty. It's very different than our model, so both huge change to our education plan and culturally what it's supposed to. That's appropriate for us. It's an okay change. I worry, again, that we'd be signaling our commitment to something like that. I also worry about the cost, the additional cost of extending the assessment as it's illustrated. I'm supportive of evaluating the model school. We'll certainly go through that with the MSBA. There are the experts on it. I have no objections to that. The article itself, I think, has a broader implication that we should consider.
Well, and I appreciate your consideration. You brought up a lot of issues there, so it's kind of hard to go back through them. I guess the way I wanted to have this round was chiefly focused on cost. It's that idea of what could you do with it? I can't really speak to that. The idea here was that this is simply an option, an option that can only be exercised if it is asked for. I deliberately put the language into this to indicate that this is meant to be an option. It is meant to be an option for two reasons. One, because I think it might work, might, or it might not, you know? The second is I think it's a good way to sell the idea in general that at a time when the cost keeps going up and up and up, that you can say, look, we ran this down. We ran it down, we talked to the NSBA, and it doesn't work for this reason. And I think that that's, I think we're running in a period, this is my fear, of voter fatigue. There's just so much stuff that's coming at us. I want the school committee, if we go, we might as well say, we did it because we focused on cost. And so, I think this provides a tool to do that. I appreciate your consideration.
If I could add to, or maybe have a comment, Sasha, on what you had said, that from what this says, this is not a commitment to use model schools. To me, I see this as a commitment to the taxpayers to say, we're going to put it all on the table, and the direction could still be the one consolidated school. Or it could be a large model school, but I think the cost of the project is so great, no matter which way it goes, that we need to say to the taxpayers, we looked at everything, and we want you to see that we looked at everything, and then we can go from there. So, that to me is just saying, let's lay it all on the table, because you seem like a money guy. Come down cost.
So, a lot of what I do in real estate is to simply look, it does something even make enough sense to bring it before a client. And one of the things that we worked on with a couple of our nonprofit clients, specifically Gloucester College, was essentially looking, where are we coming in at an acquisition necessarily? We were, this was rare, Sasha, because for the most part renovations don't work by comparison to the old news, I think you know. I mean, it's usually cheaper when you're talking about an old building, but every time you have to look at it, because sometimes it will, and in this case, it being an industrial building, it was easier to strip out. Now, so Jenny, you're right in that this is meant only to be an opportunity to review with an understanding that after review, it may not work. But in general, I've had, I've been working with Kate and Sasha and I enjoy doing it on an override project. If there was a way that I could be helpful in terms of renewing, reviewing numbers, or helping run things down to make the school committee's life a little easier, I would certainly be willing to see if there was something I could do based on your request. So, let me know if that might be helpful or might not.
I appreciate that. I think the last thing that I'm clearly hearing from you is the transparency. We have talked a lot about that. We're going to talk about it more tonight, other forums, and we don't really formally start until July. We've been talking about how do we even get ahead of that for exactly that reason. So, I appreciate you bringing that up tonight. I think, again, you got full support around the table for that.
One of the things that I think we collectively can't lose sight of is that, once we're into the eligibility period, we start down that road. There's going to be a school building committee that will have a representation of us, but not all of us, that's going to essentially, in many ways, take over this process. It's not going to be us collectively sitting here. The school building committee that the select board puts together is going to do a lot of the work, and the school committee will then be presented with options and to make a final decision.
Yeah, I think that's it, is to make sure that all of those options are explored and so.
I'm a little shocked about when people start to talk, you know? A couple of questions.
I was almost out of the door.
So, you said you like to look at numbers and everything, so my question is, have you been able to quantify a cost savings with model schools?
So, one of the questions that you see is that if you're looking, I have seen model schools, there are eighteen elementary schools that are currently on the NSBA's website that are listed as options. And when you look at it, you'll see that they run from, and there's a flexibility that they give in their charts, plus or minus twenty percent. So, the largest one they have is over a thousand students, so you could take that and you could drop that down to eight hundred. Or you could take a, you could even do something like, if we're looking at the Doian site, at the moment, you're saying, okay, if we were looking at a single school model at that location, yes, I think there are schools that could work. I mean, one of the questions also, if you look at the Doian site, is it's got pretty good frontage to the road, but it's a large site, but it is kind of shotgun, and the front to back is fairly long. So, you do need to figure out, okay, which one of these model schools is going to be site-appropriate? And then you can have to look at the schools for a variety of different reasons that aren't just student size. But one idea that I remember talking with Sasha about a while back, which I thought was kind of a creative one, was if you were, if you were looking to do something that is a combined site on the Doian campus, you could potentially take two model schools, each about four hundred students, and you could put them next to one another. It's still one school even if it has two buildings. And you could therefore take model schools that you liked and potentially combine them in that way with just a quarter. And when you look at the middle school and the high school, you see a sort of a combination of two separate buildings that you can walk with. I'm not an architect, and I don't fully understand the requirements, the school, the outlining in the proposal. So, I would have to review that to see, do these fit into these categories? But on the surface of it, I think it could make sense. Enough to investigate. And the savings that I have heard anecdotally can be above ten percent. So, let's assume we were talking about a savings, above the current model, it's a hundred and fifty million dollars. And let's assume the NSBA is going to pay forty percent of that. So, that leaves the town with ninety million. If the town saved five percent, that'd be a four and a half million dollar savings. That's not insignificant, but I understand what you mean.
So, how are you, what, you said you heard five or ten percent?
I remember one number, and I can't pull it up at the moment. It was actually above ten percent in terms of savings over what they were expecting from a model that was an initial quote on a custom-built school.
Have you been able to quantify?
I haven't been able to see any numbers in talking to the NSBA. They weren't able to quantify any particular savings because of just different price points, different options that schools decide to go with.
And it's also very hard when you're talking about different years, how much of a model do you put on a cost escalation? And another consideration, just in general, right now in the Boston housing market, you're seeing the largest reason projects are not being built is just simply the interest rates. Now, some of that is because they were being built at a sub-five percent return, so right on the margins in a superhard market. So, you get a tick up of a hundred and fifty basis points, and that's all it takes to shelter them. But nonetheless, one of the aspects to this that is just in my know is what are the interest rates going to be? Where is the economy going to be? How much is the cost of construction going to be when things finally start going? Those are going to all drastically impact costs in a way that frankly, no one can predict. And that's part of what does think this process.
I think that's all, echo what Sasha said, that like my, what I'm hearing is, I'm concerned that the title of the article implies that it's synonymous, like cost savings, cost efficiency is synonymous with model schools, model schools are exclusive to model schools. So...
Well, that certainly wasn't the intention to indicate that the only way to save money was going to be through a model school. The implication was merely to suggest that model schools, because of the reasons highlighted, which does make logic sense, logic sense, because you can typically build things cheaper in the private sector because among other things, you don't have to go through the same level of review. And you can operate more quickly. But this is meant merely to make sure that the public and the officials in town are familiar with this as an option. It's an option that upon review, the decision might be, you know what, it doesn't work. But the only way you can get to it, the NSBA has no interest in putting their hand up and saying, you know, you might really want to look at this. They won't do that. You have to ask them, as I understand it. And so, I think it's, I think it's worth the ask. I think it's what we were talking about tonight in baseball practice, and I ran over the phone. You know, you got to run things down, even if you don't think it's going to work, you got to make sure it's not going to work. And in this case, I will say from what I know about construction, anytime you can save time and design costs, which typically in private sector at least run fifteen percent of overall project cost, or can. So, cost savings, if you can save in design and save in time, it's hard for me to imagine that it wouldn't provide a reasonably sizable savings, assuming, and this is the question, the school committee has to decide, that the model schools that are an option will work for more than just putting students in a building. Does it work for everything the school committee and the town of Ipswich wants to do? And that's really, yeah, my favorite.
I think, I appreciate the conversation. Exactly. Also, I have one last question on slide four. You say combined enrollment numbers are, something where it approaches eight hundred-plus students? I was wondering what your source was for that number.
That was my understanding, which may be an error, of what if you were thinking the number of students currently in Winter and the number of students currently at Doian, and you were to have to build school space for all the, I mean, both Winter and Doian are, what I understand to be an end of life. I mean, they're both in need of repair and replacement, and obviously, you know, that was looking like it was true back in two thousand and eighteen. It's even more true seven years later in two thousand and twenty-five. So, it was my understanding that that was the rough enrollment numbers of the combined schools, and that's where I go with that. Is that an error?
No, we just have our twenty twenty-two enrollment study, you know, we don't know exactly what the NSBA is going to say, so I just didn't know how you came up with that number.
That was how I did it. That was my understanding, but do we know? Just out of curiosity, since we're asking what the number of two and two schools is?
Currently, it's seven forty-seven. I looked it up today, as of January first.
Back to the odd one.
In our budget. I just pulled that from the budget book, because I was curious too.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate your energy and your flexibility.
Can I make some comments? Sorry, I had a couple of comments. Hi. Thank you. I have a couple of thoughts. We've obviously heard a lot from the community about model schools. We've talked about it a fair amount. I think we would be foolish to not look into it, because I think who doesn't want to save money and potentially time, you know, because of all the reasons you outlined. We have a lot of projects before us, so why would we not want to look into it? So, I guess one of my options, one of my outcomes is, could we, if the school committee committed to asking the MSBA to look at the model school program, do you feel the citizen's petition is necessary? That's one. You can answer.
So, I would have to respectfully ask the town moderator whether is it possible to withdraw a petition once it's been placed. So, I would certainly, I actually hadn't considered that thought, but I could consider, I mean, I would consider it, I think it's helpful if the entire town understands what that potential is, because I think the other thing here is it's garnering support and a deeper understanding of the program itself. I would tend to say it would probably be less necessary under the scenario that you're discussing.
Right, yeah, and I agree that...
But I think that part of my concern here is, this has to pass. I mean, this time, we got to pass something that is going to have town support, and I've been kind of surprised that town support can move in ways that I wouldn't have expected. But, you know, my kids will be out of elementary school by a wide margin by the time this happens, but, you know, I think this is a very important consideration. I feel lucky to live in Ipswich, where a lot of things that other towns don't pay as much attention to, stuff that seems like it falls by the wayside, like the arts, I just really appreciate it. So, I'd like to see, like to see strength placed back in the elementary schools, you know, just in terms of having the physical plan necessary to do the job.
So, I agree with you that the community would need to learn about the model school program. I'm just concerned that the last article at town meeting is not the best time to educate the community on anything. I think, well, tell them, I just said...
If I had to pick my place in the race, I would have picked closer to the beginning than at that time, when I have to venture in to see if they're actually going to vote with you. I do get that.
Yeah, but so, if we, and I'm not saying we, this would be another discussion for us, but if we do sort of commit to asking the MSBA to look into the model school program as an exercise, which I think, you know, I would support.
We've said that, I mean, we've been saying that.
Right, we have said we would. We've talked about that we will look into it. So, if that was something we could support, I would be curious at another time soon to know if removing the citizen's petitions would be an option, because I do think during the feasibility study, which is presumably when this would happen, that it's all transparent, and the public would learn about the options and things. And then my option two, if that wasn't a possibility, if it's too late, or you're not comfortable withdrawing your citizen's petition based on our commitment, and you kept your citizen's petition, I would be curious if you would be open to adding a line that said something along the lines of, you know, this wouldn't commit us to a model school option. Like, it's an evaluation as an option, and it would not commit us.
I don't know whether the language can be changed, but I would be happy to emphasize at town meeting to say, let me be clear, that this does not commit the town of Ipswich to a model school option, because it's in the petition itself, and I tried to make that very clear. This is meant only to make sure we look at it. This commits the town to no decision-making.
And I, and I hear that, but I just want to, I would want to see it in potentially written into the language, if possible, and then if possible, also if it's possible to change. I would also support moving cost efficiency from the title and putting something more about like, school committee... and putting something more about like, school committee commitment to evaluating model school program. Because it does imply that not doing the model school program is not cost efficient. You know, like it's, it's perception of the public, and I'm not saying you're
I, I understand the concern and I respect the need for finessing language, particularly at ten thirty at night in a public forum. The, the, the purpose for that was more just to let people know, why is this here? It's not here for anything other than the fact that if we can save money in the process and get where we need to go, it's really worth considering. I mean, that was, that was the purpose of it.
Yeah. No, I think your purpose is well intentioned.
That if we don't, you know, that, that we're headed down to the road of ruin if we don't take this left turn. It's, it was, it was merely, this is a great option that frankly, has no downside. So it's worth considering.
Yep. Thank you.
If I could add, I think that having it be requested for that this, which I'm not doing, but if it's being requested by the school committee that this citizen's petition may not, that perhaps it can be taken off, doesn't sit well with me because if we're for, let's just see what all the options are. It's so much money. Let's just, this should, to me, this is something that we should say, yeah, okay, let's put her all out there. All these people are going to have to pay lots of money. Let's see what happens. And then, okay, now let's work with the information that we know. So nothing's being, you know, so we don't say, oh, okay, well, we think it's this. Let's try it, let's look at it. So I'm concerned that the public is going to hear that the school committee is suggesting this be removed as a citizen's petition.
Because we're doing it anyways, is what I mean. Not, not that we wouldn't.
So that's just so great. So let's move forward with it.
I think that point is valid only in the sense that we live in an era of crazy conspiracy theories. So it's like, well, wait a minute, why are we taking this out in the eleventh hour? I mean, I, I can imagine a scenario where if, if
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, Chris, did, you know, did I convince you of something? I, I, I understand your idea. I think it's, it's one well worth considering. I just, I, I think the easiest option as I see is we all get on board with the idea. We just embrace it, endorse it, and move on. And that, that seems to be the, the win-win all around. But I, I will consider, you know, the options subject to my understanding of what is even possible.
Right. So maybe we leave it that you could look into potentially any options of, could it be withdrawn? Could it be edited? And then what, whatever those answers are, we can decide what, where, where you go. Or you could decide where you go from there.
I mean, it's not your petition, but I will say the way that it read to me, it would be found very, I, I really enjoyed your presentation. I thought your presentation
And it feels, by the way, can I just say it feels a little like old Home Week? Just because we did work together on the override, so it's nice to see you at the other side of the aisle. It's also nice to publicly get to talk about, because I really did enjoy working with Carol. I was like, he was, he was like a rock star, okay? He was the head of the board. Kathleen Sullivan was the best client I ever had. She was the head of school. But Carol was just the guy who came in and got it done. And nonprofits have that tendency to move very slowly and they just make it happen. So anyways, so, yeah, I, I, it was not my intention with the language. That's why in person is sometimes better than email, just because sometimes you read something, I'll go, what is he trying to say here? So thank you for allowing me to clarify.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Right.
All right. So next up, strategic plan and funding. And we apologize for running a little behind. And we welcome members of the Strategic Planning Committee, Jim Engle and Churchill. I also want to say thank you to Jim, who worked hard over the last day or so. Anything we may have more? Head up here. I was thinking maybe we would just, because we're not all publicly discussed or heard the updates to the strategic, to our inputs to the strategic plan. So starting with overrides, Tom or Dr. Blake, do you want to block this?
Or do you want me to start with that, sort of the ask of the Strategic Planning Committee? Okay. Yeah. So this, so I'm the school committee liaison to the Strategic Planning Committee, and I'm trying to talk this way so you can hear me. So really to help finalize this, finalize, and I say finalize because I think the strategic plan is always going to be, it's going to be a living document because things are going to pass, things are going to fail, things are going to become more or less expensive. So what finalize, trying to finalize the model. The Strategic Planning Committee was looking for confirmation numbers from us, from us on a few different things to make sure the model is as accurate as we can get it. So it was the elementary building project cost and year. And then the override, sort of again, cost and year. So we were sort of, you know, our projects, the school projects really drive a lot of the strategic plan. So we really want to try to get those numbers as sort of accurate as we can. So the elementary building working group discussed this a little bit. Budget Subcommittee, you know, and Tom, Markham, and Dr. Blake did some calculations. So we'll sort of hear what the adjustments are that, that change the inputs into the strategic plan. And we can talk about those a little bit. If you want to start with the changes to the override numbers.
Well, so based on everything that Kate had said and what we had tried to, to react to in the last, well, the last couple of weeks and the last week itself, wanting to come up with something that drew the assumptions that we were most comfortable with as administration, you know, bringing, operating forward. And those, a couple of those, those drivers came out of finance committee discussions last week. One of the assumptions was that the town's annual contribution to the school budget would grow by three percent. And we would match that, so, so to speak, or at least match the percentage in, in, in expectation around school budget increases from, from appropriation of three percent. And that there would be throughout the budget development process over the course of, of the ten years that we are, that we are looking at, that the budget development would acquire a level service funding with an expectation of some modest annual reductions. Some, some staffing efficiencies, some building efficiencies, and which would result in, in some net reductions to the, to, to, to the school budget in a year or two. The, the other thing that we were attempting to do was to bring, you know, overrides that were less, less, probably more frequent, excuse me, not necessarily getting a five-year number at any one time because that would be a very big number at any, at any, you know, one ballot. But appreciating the cross, the, the course of, of the ten years, we're, we would be looking at, you know, every, every second or third year, about a three million dollar ask. So what, what is, what was, was presented as recommendation one or for your consideration, that in the, in spring of 2027, to fund fiscal years twenty-nine and thirty would be a three million dollar ask. And then, you know, two years later, in the spring of twenty-nine, a three million dollar ask to fund fiscal years thirty-one and thirty-two. And then the spring of thirty-one, another three million dollar ask to fund fiscal years thirty-three and thirty-four. One of the things that's, that's, that's important there is that this becomes what I was, what I'm calling a, a rolling, a rolling balance that in no one time, you bring the counter down. So there's always, and, and allowance that as you, as you may see, if you, if you look at the sheet, that there's always a balance that could be sufficient if either of those overrides were to fail. And that's the, that, that's the reason why it's, at least in this model, of course, we, we dozens of models, right? But in this model, that's why it's every other year to fund the third year. Because it gives the school district and the school committee a twelve-month window to make a sufficient amount of cuts should the override fail. If, if we did the override, for example, in fiscal year twenty-seven to fund twenty-eight, well, that's two months later, right? Town meetings in May, fiscal year begins on July one. That would be a dramatic change and a dramatic, a, a, you know, drop, a dramatic reduction. So what, what, what this model does is it asks to fund, or the spring of twenty-seven, for example, to fund fiscal twenty-nine. So if, so there's, there's enough of the build, there's enough of the, for, for, for town officials to build in, you know, you know, when it's going to hit the tax rolls, it didn't necessarily have to hit in that year. It would hit, you know, a year later. There could be some other, you know, funding, you know, plan there. Plus, it would certainly give, as I, as I said, from our end of the aisle, the administration, the school committee, enough of a ramp or a twelve-month runway, if you will, should any of those not pass. That's the basic summary of what this would be at this time.
Okay. So just to recap, that would be, that's quite a different number than we first gave to the Strategic Planning Committee. And that is largely because of massive increase in health insurance, unanticipated, decreased town, decreased amount from the town than we were hoping or that we were holding for fiscal twenty-six and beyond. Are those related to?
Well, the other thing I would say is that the number that we gave, which about a year ago now, the two-point-six million dollar figure anticipated, or at least if I'm remembering correctly, what we answered was the number for the first override, meaning the next override.
Right.
This looks at a ten-year, ten-year span.
Yeah.
Which encompasses three overrides. So the two-point-six million dollar figure at that time was a single override, meaning whatever the next one would be.
Right. Well, I think we had originally given the strategic plan a two-point-six and a four-point-three.
Yeah.
So that was, so that's, can someone do that? Six-point-nine? Two-point-six, four-point, so that's six-point-nine. So we're essentially going from six-point-nine to nine and bumping them up in, okay. This does not, I'm assuming this is like a worst-case scenario, like no, not major cuts?
Yes.
Sort of place to start.
I would absolutely, this would be a worst-case scenario. I didn't feel it was incumbent, and I discussed this, really wasn't incumbent upon us at this time to put out there what significant cuts would need to be.
Right.
So it really, as, as the email that you pushed out, or sent out rather, speaks to modest annual reductions that would come in the course of, of, of efficiencies. Like someone's retiring, and we're higher at a hundred thousand, and we're replacing them at sixty thousand, there's a forty thousand savings there that would come through attrition.
Right.
But any sort of thing to, and, oh, the other thing that, that I know we've discussed around this table and discussed quite a bit at Budget Subcommittee is the expectation or at least, you know, you're modeling out, how do we get out of all the override business? This doesn't do that.
Right.
So I didn't want to get ahead of ourselves. I didn't want the administration to be out on, on a limb, so to speak. So yes, Kate, I would wholeheartedly agree that this is a worst-case scenario that doesn't have other conditions or assumptions, you know, in effect.
Let's just emphasize again, this is a worst-case scenario.
Right.
Starting point that we have time to further investigate.
So
I have questions.
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll be the first to say, and I'm sure the table will agree with me. I have serious concerns about asking for that many overrides in that short of a time period. Given, you know, Mr. Carroll's presentation of what's to come. We all know what's to come, even more, many, many, many more than the three things he listed. So that is not tangible to me. So I think, I may obviously appreciate the exercise, and it's a good place to start, but I think we're going to need to think about other options that are more substantial. And so I mean, I think Budget Subcommittee needs to meet and dig into some other, some other options of maybe, you know, doing the overrides, but also, or doing an override if we need to. I think ultimately, bigger than my concern about the three overrides in six years is the fact that this doesn't get us out of, we, we want to kind of, long-term plan for the Budget Subcommittee and hope all of us is to get out of this reliance on subsequent overrides. Even if it's every five years, it's a lot to ask of taxpayers. So I think our goal, you know, even if it takes ten years, is to get us out of the increasing reliance on overrides. And I always talk about the two lines, that the amount we get and the amount we spend are going not in the right direction. And this seems to like bring the lines parallel. So like, we get three percent, we spend three percent, but we still need overrides to get, to, to make up the difference. So we need the lines to start converging, even if it's a little bit, and even if it takes us ten years to get, to get there. So I'm hoping there's a middle ground that is not free override. I don't know if we can do it with no overrides, but maybe we can do it with one override and then introduce reductions and sort of get us closer. So that's all I have to say right now.
So the question is, I guess, if you're outside, but it's up to you. I guess it's everybody that we, does anybody else have a question about those numbers in general? And then I want to kind of get to a place where we're saying, is that what we are living with in the strategic plan? That's, that actually document or the world that's moving forward?
Can I maybe take the second one before you? I don't see others anywhere when we put this in strategic. I think it's just way too big. I don't think it's palatable by the community. I don't know how we put our name, like, I, I think there's a significant amount of daylight between this. And I appreciate the exercise. We went through several models, right, that looked like this. Nothing wrong with the model between this versus what we could sustain, what the education plan we need and the cost of the town. I, I, I don't think, I'm happy to discuss. I, I don't see how we submit this, though. We're, we're just not there yet. We just have more work to do.
Can I ask us a question about the actual handout? Why is the elementary school separate into two line items? Is that?
I'm sorry, why is the what?
Is that terrible?
Yeah. Okay, so maybe we will need Strategic Planning Committee to, to join in. So in terms of time, when can we, yeah, if you want to participate, I guess you can.
I could bring them like back to a more reasonable spot.
She'll sit there, she'll sit there. So just talking about the override.
Let me just stick here with the difference. This is an advertised meeting which compares the town committee with the church. We pay them a subscription fee. Open on the inside. We're working on asking the citizens, please, here, for the
Excellent.
Okay.
And I prefer, I don't have any overheads. I prefer something between me and the audience because I'm overcome with joy. I have something to get right by there.
Can I move just to open the Strategic Planning Committee meeting? Or you already did? Okay, sorry.
Yeah, you were
No, we had to.
Question was on, question was on timing, Jim. So if we're not ready to have you include it, I know we have a draft with this number, but if we're not ready to move forward with this number, what's next in terms of your timing?
We have a meeting Tuesday evening, and whatever we come out of this meeting with, we'll go into the model that we're going to advance, probably report on at town meeting.
When do you publish for town meeting?
Uh, there's two parts to that, there's two elements to that. One is the report to town meeting won't be published until April, probably, uh, the creation of what will get published will happen next year. So we don't have much time. We have an hour or so tonight, and then maybe that's it. I mean, we're, we're really, we're really up against, uh, we were supposed to have a full report at town meeting, and we're not going to have a full report, so we're already up here. Uh, I will say that based on what I'm hearing tonight from Mr. Markman, I misinterpreted the information that was given to me on the overrides. I had assumed that when you, when you said that the ask would be in 2027, that that would appear on the tax bills for fiscal 2028. What I'm hearing really is, it's not going to happen until 2029. So we already have a fairly significant update to make to the model as a result of Mr. Markman's clarification. So, uh, I think I heard a question as to why the elementary schools and two-rides. Recognizing that it's the biggest item on the strategic planning list, it's $150 million, which is in all of this, not under us, that having a $150 million borrowing hit in one year, first of all, is a huge number, and second, it's not the way it would really happen. Typically, what will happen is maybe half of the money will be borrowed in one year, even though the authorization is for the full amount, half will be borrowed in one year, and then half will be borrowed in the next year. So the Rev 29 model has that, and the way I, the way I built that into the model, to your question, it's now appearing on two lines. So the $150 million is appearing on the one year, but the debt service impact is, is split between the two.
You didn't, I don't want to get too far, I just, what's on my first, which is deeper for this floor, did you, did your model, did the MSBA reimbursement not be total? Okay. Um, okay, so let's step back, so how are we going to get to a place?
Place that you'd get to, you know, to get to reasonable override dollar amounts and timing would be upfront reductions in the overall budget in the next couple of years. Would be making up a number and the impact to the plan is my concern in trying to do this at short work. Right, I mean, to, to make the math work, like, that's, maybe not only, but that's the most likely feasible option, but there's a lot of implications there I'm worried about. Can we come with the right dollar amount, and can we understand what the impact is to the education plan that's still sustainable? Or, to come back to this group and be very intentional and say, the cuts would look like this, do we agree strategically that's how we want our model to change going forward?
Yeah.
I think it's important.
Not about just the override dollar amounts, we'd have to do that first to get to the override dollar amounts, and that's the secondary piece.
I think it's important to understand how we anticipate this plan to work. Again, it, it was commissioned by the select board, and they asked us to look at how wide the facilities, or the facilities of schools and everything. The purpose of it is, is to, in a, in a reasonable way, project what these requirements look like over the next 10 to 15 years. It's, uh, there will be a next step. Once the, the basic information, which is the Rev 29 information, is presented to the select board, then I think with the select board, the finance committee, the school committee, will then begin to talk about scenarios. And in those scenarios, we'll start, we'll start ranking, uh, projects, ranking investments, we prefer to call them investments. Uh, the strategic planning committee has gone through an exercise where we, we understand how we would be able to build scenarios, but it is not the job of strategic planning committee to force a scenario on anyone. It's going to be a collaborative effort between the three governing bodies, the NSBA, the school committee, and then the select board, to sit in a room some night and go over some scenarios that may be generated by the strategic planning committee, but certainly not forced in any way. But for the three groups to come together and say, this is kind of how we expect things to go for the next five to 10 years, borrowing any offsets or, or whatever. So, uh, although we've encouraged everybody to be as, as precise as they can be in terms of identifying, you know, two aspects, what are the projects, and what are the likely costs, and when are they likely to be funded, recognizing that of the 62 investments that are on the plan, I don't think there's a single person that has come forward and say, um, you know, said, but my number might change, or I'm not really sure my number, I'm not really sure of the timing, but we're working with predicting an unpredictable future. So, uh, and I appreciate, you know, the, the, the override number, that's obviously an important number, it's, it's one of the really, it's one of the really big drivers, because when you look at a million-dollar override, if you think of that, if you had a million dollars' worth of debt service, what would the size of that project be? And that project would probably be, you know, 15 to 20 million dollars. So when we look at, you know, a $3 million override, plus, we're looking at the equivalent of a project of $50 million. It's, it's, it's one of the really huge aspects of, of the strategic plan.
And before you get to the, if we haven't had the conversation across the tri-boards to come up with those scenarios, what would you publish for the spring town meeting?
That's to be decided Tuesday night.
Yeah.
I think it's important for us to understand, in terms of what you're publishing, so that we know what information is critical for you to have, especially since we're obviously not at a place where we've got final numbers for.
Well, we need, I mean, that, they need the override numbers and the element, I mean, they have what they need, we just need to, to nail down those numbers. And I think, when, we'll talk a little bit later, and we talked at the last meeting, we're coming up, it seems like the report, which I haven't read the draft of yet, but from what we talked about at the last strategic planning committee meeting, the report is going to be around tax, or sort of recommended tax thresholds that the boards will commit to, like, trying to manage these projects within.
So I guess, so when you say you've identified what's going to be published, is that what we have tonight that was shared with us? The scenarios and the, the list of projects?
Well, I, I thought you meant what the strategic planning committee report is going to be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How would you do the tax piece if we haven't met as a tri-board to opine on?
Because the, because the finance committee has weighed in, the select board has weighed in, and we're weighing in later.
Yeah, it's the independent part that I'm worried about. If we haven't agreed to say, as a tri-board, here's how we move forward, how would you publish that?
Because you're not.
They weighed in, I want to say, line, right, they kind of, whoever, we weren't working about it, knowing what projects would fall under, we, um, if there was something that, like, would already be powered in, we'd be simply looking at it.
I, that's, yeah, I mean, I thought it was a tri-board exercise, that's what I'm concerned about, if we haven't gone through that together, how early, what's getting, what's getting published?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I haven't looked at the draft or report yet.
Do you mean that we're worried it's, it's three independent lists?
No. Well, can we try to look, okay, let me try to, try this another way. So if we still are talking about the override situation, so what Tom has presented to us, again, is sort of like a worst-case scenario, we keep increasing the budget at 3%, just sort of in line with town appropriation would require three. Is anyone here comfortable with three, $3 million over, $3 million overrides over six years? Does that seem like something we could pitch to the community with any sort of confidence?
Guys, we're on top of the $3 million to understand, our current rate of increase right now is 4.3%. That's concerned, what's in the model is three. So on top of the $3 million overrides, it's the equivalent of $600,000 worth of cuts each year. So when you talk about worst-case scenario, it's cuts and the $3 million, and that's the part I'm worried about.
Right, but I think we want to get, I mean, but if, if, if we're not comfortable with that scenario of three, $3 million overrides, which I agree would have to incorp, the keeping to 3% would have to incorporate some cuts.
Yeah.
Um.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, we couldn't.
I was just rethinking.
Oh.
We measured.
Sorry.
Oh, no. So if, if.
Yeah, my, my point was that there's two things happening, it's not just that the overrides, it's also cuts. That, that's important to understand, because if we feel comfortable with 300, that the expectation is level service.
Right.
That's not what this is, that's the important part.
So the cuts have to come, and go this way, and we need to, more money, we need to be.
Yeah.
So.
I think that's going to be the case pretty much with any of these scenarios that we're working with.
Yeah, we're setting the bill either way, it's just like, how much?
And, and to, if I could say again, what this, what this model in front of you does not do, um, but I think it's significant that we, one, say that out loud and reinforce whatever the committee's direction may be, this does not seek to get us out of the override business.
Right.
Because I think if we add that into the conversation as a plan over the next, you know, you know, 10 years, um, that requires some real thoughtful planning around composition and look and feel, um, and, and spending of the district.
Yeah, I think to that point, there's, there's two, and I think where you were going right, there's two levers. We can reduce how much we spend, and we can also increase taxes for residents. This scenario does both. You could go one extreme and say, we're going to, we're going to cut $3 million off our budget, we don't need an override ever again, but $3 million is a significant amount on our budget. You could go the other way and say, we don't want to cut anything, this is the service we expect, we don't want to make any cuts to the schools, but it's a much bigger override number going forward. So this is, I think you did a nice job of kind of threading that needle, it's in between, but it's important to understand, like, we did both, you did both here in this model.
However.
And if we were going to go down the road of trying to eventually get out of the override business, as it were, um, it would be more significant reductions in the budget theory to get us to a point where we eventually bring out the XPR.
So that's what I'm trying to ask people, is if, if we as a group don't think three, $3 million overrides is tenable, and that's an if, um, plus reduction, modest reductions to keep us at 3%, do, and do we want, do we agree that we should really be lurking long-term to get out of the override business? I don't know if you're saying override business, but to get, to, to sort of solve the structural deficit issue, even if it takes a decade, I don't know, to sort of get us more in line with appropriated, with, with town appropriations, which would require more than modest reductions. And if that's the case, if we want to get out of the override business, and we want to at least see a scenario that has, you know, less overrides in frequency and amounts, probably not none, because I think that might be a little unrealistic, but, you know, fewer, like, could we do it with one, um, or two of lower amounts and have more substantial reductions over time? Because that would give us, assuming it takes six, 10, eight years to get us out of it, um, that would be a long runway for us and you and your team to sort of be building budgets with those reductions in mind, and it would avoid sort of the fiscal cliff. It would be like a, over however many years, we'd ratchet the belt a little tighter every year, and if that, I think Tom needs feedback on what we want to see next, because I don't think this is the way we should proceed. And if we could get, you know, if we agree that that is what we want to do, work long-term to get out of the override business and, um, and investigate some more substantial reductions over six, eight, 10 years to get us more in line, is that something that we could ask to build a different scenario in the next few days to maybe give a different number to strategic planning on Tuesday night?
Because that's, I think there's a long-term goal and a short-term goal. The long-term is, like, how specifically are we going to do that, and what, if that can you want to do, but the short-term is, I'm speaking for myself, because, but, like, if we don't want to go with what's currently there, how do we force that to work that?
Give something to strategic planning. And I don't think we have, have to have all the answers for the next 10 years, because this isn't impacting FY '26 as far as we know, this is really like FY '27 and beyond, so it would be rebuilding a different scenario with some more cuts in numbers, not.
Well, I, I've shared during the budget conversations around '26, and even going back to last fall when we were in negotiations still, that, you know, the superintendent and I have budgets built out through FY '28 with an assumption based on level service and what fiscal '27 and what fiscal '28 are going to cost us based on the current environment. Um, so, you know, some of that, I think to answer your question more, more directly, Kate, I think we, we could, with some direction from the committee on what ex, some expectations around, um, you know, parameters it might be, um, I think we could come up with something that looks more palatable to the, to the community. And I, I, you know, it's not my end of the aisle, but I can fully appreciate that a $9 million ask, even though it's been discussed at this table, it's been written about in the paper, e- even that's not, that's not tenable, right? I can appreciate that. Um, but I also wanted to make sure that we're staying in our lane.
Right.
And that we're taking the guidance from the community leadership. But I think because of what we, what we do know and the work that we've done to get us into, you know, to the point we are for fiscal '26, we could, we could, we could come up with some scenarios in the next 48 hours or between now and Tuesday that would need to be vetted and shared, obviously, back.
That's the problem.
Would, would we not have a meeting on Tuesday?
We're like, uh.
The earliest we could, if we posted a meeting first thing tomorrow morning, the earliest that we could hold that meeting is Tuesday.
Right.
Right. So, and that would be bu- budget per whole?
Is it budget subcommittee or?
I don't think you could do Tuesday.
Well, if the budget subcommittee were, were empowered or entrusted to, to vet that number, to provide to strategic planning.
That is the strategic planning committee's at seven.
No, but I mean, we could have, we could post a meeting tomorrow of the budget subcommittee for Tuesday at, say, you know, 3:00, 4:00 in the afternoon. If it, the Tuesday afternoon meeting could be lawfully posted tomorrow.
Right. Would you do that, Jim? You care about?
I think you're, I don't think we're a couple hours away from the number.
I think.
If we could meet tomorrow, I don't think it helps us to get to something where we're close enough that as a school committee, we can say, this represents a service level we're comfortable with.
I think, but we could get a lot closer than three, $3 million overrides in three years. And I feel more comfortable having something else in the strategic planning report. I mean, I, I don't, I agree, I don't want to, I don't love jumping through hoops for a report for town meeting, I don't think any of us do, but.
I, I think.
I'm also terrified of publishing three overrides in six years in a report.
I guess what I'm feeling, I'll say it out loud, I think I said a couple before, is it's a self-imposed deadline to publish for April town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
We, if you're planning on, if your deadline for that is Tuesday, we're four days out from that, we're discussing this here with potential numbers. I think there's a lot more work to do. I worry about the downside of us publishing something that's not ready, communicate, the average person is not closely paying attention to this, so when that gets. So when that gets published, that's the number that's expected for the next ten years. I'm concerned about that.
But wouldn't you rather have that number be, you know, one override and some modest reduction, or some significant reductions over time versus three, three million dollar overrides, which is what's in the model right now?
What I'm actually proposing is, don't publish anything in spring.
Yeah, but I don't think that's our call to make, because we're the school committee. We're not the strategic planning committee.
No, I understand that. If the intention is you're publishing, the strategic planning committee is publishing information from the three boards. I'm saying, my personal view is this board is not ready to opine on numbers nor for the overall plan.
Okay. What do other people think?
Would you commit to a date?
Not for the spring.
Just get, give us a date, a date.
A date.
What do other people think? Because-
For the, for the fall.
What do other people think?
June fifteenth, July first, give us a date. Because we're going to have a little bit of a problem, I think, I, as a community, if we say that we don't have numbers.
On the things that are the most-
In the plan since August. We were carrying two point six and four point three, and we asked for an update. Is the two point six and the four point three still a good number? We've been asking for that, and now we've got an update, and now what I'm hearing is, we don't even want to go with the update.
Yeah.
Is that what I'm hearing?
We're seeing these numbers for the first time tonight, Jim, but yes, that's what we're getting.
Now the two point six and now the four point three.
That's right. Those numbers don't work based on the future budgets. The number that we've seen tonight, we're literally discussing for the first time, so no, we're not ready with that one either.
I, I guess the difficulty I have with this, and with all due respect, is that the community is going to say, or the strategic planning committee is going to have to say, we do not have numbers on the, on probably the most, with the exception of the elementary school program, with the, the, the most impactful element in the plan. We don't have numbers, and, and, and so what good is the plan?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
On a perhaps simplistic view, I get Sasha what you're saying, and because once it's in writing, that's what people say. But can it be as simple as putting a, a note next to things that remind people that this is, this is, this is our information right now? It could evolve. It could, you know, then-
You could, you could publish the municipal, but not the education line items. You could do that.
But that's not helpful. Can I have, I mean, you've given your opinion, and you're one person, and we're a committee of seven, the ones here. So I'm curious to see, hear what other people think about this. I know it's complicated, I know it's complicated, but, but I'm just curious what other people think about trying to work to get some more accurate numbers in the next week by the budget subcommittee.
Yes, I think I, I see what Jim is saying, because this is, this is school budget, the, the school asks are huge. So for, for them not to have a, a number to, as a starting point, as a reference or, you know, guide, I think it's tough, but in terms of coming up with how to whittle that down, I know that's, you know, the, it is really difficult, but I'd say if there's a, if we have to have one, so I get that, I guess it's up to, is that possible? To, to, to not get to exactly what you want, which I can understand, but to make it a little bit more palatable or, you know, fine-tune it as we can. I mean, this is just, this is, like you were saying, you can't predict the future, you can't do all this stuff, but is there a number that we could massage a little bit more so?
Right. People that, yeah, and that's what I was hoping, and it seems like Tom could build a couple other scenarios if we could get the budget subcommittee to meet, if you, if the committee would trust the budget subcommittee to vet those numbers. Again, not as like the fine, and I, I like your idea of, I think there should be several disclaimers in our strategic planning report about, this is a, you know, this is what we have at the time.
Yeah, and I think a lot of people just see it, look at it, take it as, you know, what exactly is there? Instead of having like that disclaimer constantly.
Right. And was to other, what do you think? I didn't mean to skip you, Matt. I just, Jim's on the budget subcommittee.
Yeah, so much face.
No, 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 I don't know, just.
So I'll say out loud, when the budget subcommittee met, the problem that we're dealing with is that when the superintendent's budget was presented to us, we then found out that six hundred thousand dollars more in cuts had to come. And then they came, so a lot of our discussion has been around, we need to take a deep dive whether, this summer, you know, for next year's budget, into looking at the way we deliver education. I've said this at prior meetings, so that every year going forward, we're not put in a situation where we're asking for three hundred, or three million dollars in three, every three years. So I think, given our timeline, and I get your frustration, Jim, but we were also working with a timeline of, we're, we're working backwards. We're, you know, the budget was laid out, and then more cuts had to come, which made us realize we need to drastically change the budget for next year. But we can't do that in a matter of three weeks, and to give you a number and to say, oh, well, this is how much we can cut by increasing class size and, you know, and just kind of reformulating the way we do education and IP switch. So that's kind of the timeline that isn't working for us, because it takes, it's going to take a lot of work to figure out how not to ask for three million dollars every three years.
Right, but I think, I think finding out all of the details is going to take a long time. Like, what, what exactly those cuts look like and where, and what restructuring might need to be done, what, you know, advantage, what levers we can pull, what, but I think the spirit of, I think just overrides and reductions to keep us to three percent isn't enough. So if we can find a scenario where we have, you know, maybe one override and some more significant reductions, we won't know exactly what it looks like, because I think exactly what that looks like is going to take us, or them, or all of us, a while to figure out, but I think we could have a projected out spreadsheet that had more realistic numbers in it, even if we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. But if, you know, if you and your leadership team are comfortable that this is something you could do because you have a long runway to build a budget and get input, you know, this, these more significant reductions, FY twenty-six is done, so it wouldn't start until FY twenty-seven, so that gives you already, you know, eighteen-month runway to sort of start. So it's not the answers, it's more like the, or the, the details, it's more the direction that I'm looking to have.
I, I, I'm thinking there's kind of three scenarios in terms of our input to the strategic plan. One is, as Sasha said, the strategic plan holds the report till the fall, I'm hearing. That might not be great. Option two is we go with what we know today, and we say, sure, put three million on three times, you know, and with a disclaimer, we hope not to do this, but we have to figure it out. Option three is kind of what you're proposing, Kate, is, is to come up with like a not final number, but a better than the old number, a better than the three million times three number that would have to be vetted just by the budget subcommittee and given by Tuesday.
Well, I don't know if it's, I mean, I, I'd be curious to talk to Carl on this, sorry. I'd be, I'd be curious to talk to Carl on, as a select board member, if we, if we could have to have till next Friday. And it's not ideal. If we could have till next Friday, for example, instead of next Tuesday.
The scenarios in the map, I mean, I tell you right now, you can do it right now with zero overrides, you cut two point five million dollars, you run three percent. It takes minutes to do the scenarios. I'm concerned for signing up for something we have no idea what educational impact is. So we can do that, say, no overrides, great, throw that in there with zeros, everybody loves that. We don't know what two point five million means, and so why would we sign up for something like that?
Because we would have two days and get some, get some input from you, because I don't, obviously, we wouldn't do that in one year.
Sure.
We'd do it over many years.
I think it's that second part I'm looking for, is what is the impact to the education plan of a cut like that? The math is not hard to do, right? Like, we've got, that's what the override calculator is doing, literally in seconds. It's the second part that's hard, and that's the part where I'm saying, it's not a couple hours of conversation.
Right.
I, I think that the, the reality is, we're going to need, unless there's a drastic cut, to your point, we're, we're not going to immediately get out of the override business. But if it's something that we, that we collectively want to do, and, and it's a different philosophy, right? Because years passed, they, they went down this road and wanted to have the override calculator and make that, they made those decisions to, to make the overrides last for X number of years. If we're not going to get out of the override business immediately, then it's going to, then I think we need to set a plan that it, it happens over X, over, say, a ten-year period, right? We've been looking at overrides over, you know, lasting five years. Over a ten-year period, can we get to a point where there's, we've made enough reductions or, or, uh, limited growth in the budget to get us to that point with, with the override calculator? I, I, I think it's possible. It does provide a runway for us to get there. I mean, if, if you were to tell me that today, that in, in the FY twenty-seven budget, we need to, to reduce that budget by a half a million dollars, it gives us time and conversation to, to make those adjustments. But in the meantime, they have their number, that they can do what they're going to do, you know, for the, for the publication, and that, that sort of moves us forward in that direction. But it's going to be educational philosophical discussions about how we do business. And I'll just throw this out there, in this current political climate, we don't know what even next year is going to look like. I mean, if the Department of Education at the national level is getting shut down, where's all that money for special education coming from? We don't know. You know, so there's, there's lots of unknowns there that even today, we, it's a best guess. You know, all the title funds, all of those kinds of things that we rely on significantly for.
I think one of the things that would be most helpful to us, even in the near term, would be, would, would be, you know, a compass point. What, what's the direction, so, so we are working in, in concert with your expectations? Because if, if, if we are, if, if a goal, for example, is to, in broad strokes, to get out of, you know, get out of the structural deficit and give us a, what does it look like to get out of the structural deficits, i.e. get out of the override business, and let's take, you know, ten years to do it? I, I, I agree, I, I, I was, with Sasha, that sure, we can do that math, but then the math feeds what that looks like in terms of the, the, the teaching and learning environment. And that, the math can be done as, as step two. Step one being, you guys give us a direction. Get out of the override business in, 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 in ten years and bring, as your, your analysis is going, Kate, bring those lines between the town contribution and the school spend much closer, if not the school spend going, you know, potentially even, even lower than necessary from year to year. I think that's something we could do pretty credibly in the near term. Not necessarily with what all of the, with, with what all of the cuts look like, but certainly a, a direction. If we're going to, if we're, if we're wanting to get out of the structural deficit business, you're going to give us ten years to do it. I think even to Dr. Blake's point, we would not need to cut three million dollars in one year. We could cut, we could cut that, or into the, Sasha, the number you, that's a spot-on number that's coming right out of this example. Let's take five years, uh, to do that. Let's take, you know, or something. I, I don't, I don't want to be irresponsible and throw numbers on the, on the board, because that's, I don't have that in me. But I think with having some direction from you folks, we can come up with something that lands us in a much more credible place to go into town meeting, whenever that is. Whether it's fall or spring or, or in two months or.
Okay.
But what that looks like in terms of, of reductions and, and structure and, that's not, that's what needs to take the time, because that's really-
Right, yeah.
What we want the school district to be.
So how do we, again, long-term do that, but short-term work with the strategic planning committee?
Could I just ask one question about, because this will help me have a, perhaps a better thought on this. The strategic plan, has this ever been done before? Is this, this is not a, oh, it is, every year?
No, twenty twenty, it was the last, first.
Oh, okay.
In last publication.
Okay, because I didn't remember in the previous years. Okay, so it'll be this year, and then the next strategic plan is in five years, no.
I would hope that the continuous review.
Updated annually.
Okay, okay, so whatever numbers are in there, then the following year?
Some projects may come.
And things would be more clear?
Projects may come.
Right.
Yeah.
So then they can be clarified the following year, and sort of, you know, we see something more clear, so we have to adjust it at this time. So every year we get a chance to, um, look at it as, as what are the projects that will ever come closer.
Kind of like the five-year capital plan, but a, but a longer term.
Right.
That sort of gets re-
But it's, it's really designed to do is to provide a long-term look so that near-term decisions can be made with knowledge of what other things might be out there. A prime example, above all, this spring, in May, will be a thirty-five million dollar ask for the water treatment plant, the water treatment plant. And what feedback I'm getting personally from finance committee folks and from select board folks is, before I make a decision on that thirty-five million dollars, I want to see what else is out there, and how does that fit? Because I don't think that the thirty-five million dollars, it may or may not get unanimous support. It may not get support from the community when the community sees these other things. And, and I think that the, the plan is not a, is to be viewed as a guidance document, not as a commandment, that this will happen, so it would be, would be updated annually, hopefully would do well.
Gives people context. It gives the taxpayers context of like the bigger picture, so it's not trying to avoid this project. I'm not going to vote for this, because I'm going to vote for that instead. So instead, it's like, here's kind of the whole picture as best we can paint it.
Yeah, I actually understand the reason for it. I would say every year it can be re-presented, presented again to them at the town, spring town meeting, and the numbers can be adjusted as, we get a clearer picture of what's going on. So it's not going to be like, this is set in stone for five years. This is the number on the page, and then next year we can refine it and read it.
Right.
And, and the, you know, one possible reason, very possible reason for changing the plan is that if an ask gets rejected, now what do you do?
Right. I have one more monkey wrench about the overrides that I noticed on the projection from Tom. Right now, there's an, the second override, I believe it's in FY twenty-nine? Twenty-seven, twenty-nine, thirty-one?
Yeah, calendar year.
So the twenty-nine override would hit the tax bills the same time as the elementary building project, which is a political no-go. We would want to, so that's something that I think could, having those projects not hit. which is a political no-go. We would wanna, so that's something that I think could, having those projects not hit at the same time would be better.
I think that's the feedback from the strategic planning committee, as we have examined how to create scenarios, we've looked at that.
Right.
Well, we don't want to, to create as a scenario, as a buildup of major projects in a single year. That we may advance a, a, a project, or, or slow it down, so as to manage the year-to-year action rate of the project.
Okay.
So I, I, I think, though, that, I think I'm correct in, in stating this, but the, when the, when the clock starts ticking on the MSBA process, um, and I, I put in my, my notes, um, when I, I arrived at, and we could talk about the, the number, but when I arrived at the timing of it, the projects that, that are sort of in the pipeline, or, or recent projects, have all been in the, the four-year range from, from when they were accepted into the eligibility period, until they went to the town for a final vote, where it was about four years. So, um, that's what it took us the last time, that's what Hamilton-Wenham was, that's what Penn Tucket was. So that's why I, I put in the, the, the four-year timeframe, which would bring us to 2000, spring of 2029, to ask the voters. I don't, I don't know that that project can, can be put off necessarily. I think there's, there's timeframes in there.
We, we've recognized that
Okay.
as a constraint on that project, or a couple of other projects whose timing is tied to outside sources, uh, wastewater, uh, pump station. We've done more of pump station. Uh, that, that will set its own schedule. We won't have much opportunity to change that schedule. A lot of the other, other projects, we can move around, but there are a, a few
Okay.
that, uh, whose timetable is set by external forces, not by, not by our own.
Okay.
And we've tried to, we've tried to recognize that
Yeah.
in public scenarios.
Yep.
I haven't chimed in, but I, I, uh, I, I don't see any value in putting this 3, 3, and 3 on there, if none of us see this as a viable future, right? So, and I have absolute faith in the budget subcommittee, if they wanna tackle this, to try and come up with something that you feel is, is more accurate. I guess with the assumption that this is, in fact, the living, breathing document, and it's not a mandate, then, you know, if you wanna get the best number, we head in there, and if this isn't it, then, then we need, we probably should come up with something that we feel is more accurate. Um, if you think that can be done by Tuesday, I, I know it's a huge ask.
Can't be done by Tuesday, I don't think. Well, I mean, it'd be really, really tight. I would love to call, call, call Carl and see if we could get it by the end of the week, but...
If that's the case, does that make you, that those are a little bit more weird, that it's more comfortable with trying to run through this exercise to create a number that's more, more accurate? I mean, I guess we can't, you know?
It's not gonna be accurate, but it's gonna be more palatable. Yeah.
It's, it's, it's not even a matter of accurate, it's, it's a matter of palatable.
Yeah.
Right. I mean, that much, I totally understand, right?
I would, yeah, I mean, I would compare to putting together your budget for this year. How long did that take you?
Months.
Months, yep.
As it should.
Yeah, I agree.
And we're not, but we're not asking for a full budget. We're asking for the numbers confirmed with the superintendent and, you know, hopefully, leadership team, that this is not crazy.
It becomes a direction.
It's a direction.
Without specificity.
Right. But, but a direction that the budget subcommittee, the leadership team, and the finance director, and the superintendent think is more palatable and doable, even though we don't have all the answers yet, then I think this is palatable for the community, which is not at all palatable. And potentially, I don't know, just, I don't know.
So how do we move forward? I mean, are, are we?
Diana.
Again?
I would, go ahead.
Can you last Carl for one more day?
I can. I, I mean-
Might he, might he say yes?
Um, I can text him right now. I, I don't know. I mean, he's, he's traveling, he's in California, so I have no idea if he'd be back to me.
Matt, to your, to your-
And I don't know if that's-
Point, Matt, would, would the committee as a whole support the budget subcommittee to make that decision? If we were, if we, if they pulled a, a meeting together for next Tuesday to, to look at different scenarios? I mean, at, I don't wanna make this sound so, so easy, but the override calculator is, is literally just math. And plugging in different scenarios in different, uh, different lengths of time, we can look at, we can quickly look at different scenarios to see what is gonna be more palatable and, and the most realistic, right? We, we know factually that we can't sustain what we're doing. We know factually that we have to look at bringing those lines closer together. That means that we're gonna be looking at future reductions of some sort. That, that's a given. Unless there's some new infusion of, of massive quantities of money. We can, we can model those out fairly quickly, and it doesn't take two minutes, but, you know, to, to have something more palatable. But I, I don't know that we're gonna be able to do a full school committee meeting before that decision has to be made. So I would ask if the, if the committee as a whole is comfortable with the budget subcommittee having a meeting and, and making that decision?
I-
I am, um, and I appreciate the weight it adds on to the shoulders of the, that is, the budget subcommittee. Taking that it doesn't have the three of us. But yes.
Can, can I ask one question? The, um, the request of a 2029 override, knowing that it would hit at the same time as the elementary school, can you give us an indication, as the budget subcommittee, should we just say the scenario we build in would not require an override that year? Is that safe to say that we agree on that before we go into another subcommittee meeting?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think as much wiggle room around it as you can, because we still, I mean, 2029 is still not official, you know?
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that's a big ask.
Mm-hmm. So, I, I would prefer that route, personally. You prefer that route?
I mean, but, uh, you know, we do have some, some, uh, I have some scenarios based on information that came out of, you know, last week's FinCon meetings around the 3%, right? Because the, the prior modeling had the 4.5% growth. Um, when that, that changed, um, in the last, in a couple months, and then the last month in earnest, and then we got some feedback again last week. I, you know, I've certainly begun those models. So, certainly being able to share that as early as next week, um, for initial vetting is, I mean, would be certainly helpful.
Would we understand next week impacted education plan? That's my concern.
No. Well, I'm sorry.
No, no, I, I, I don't, I don't think we, I don't think we will for a number of reasons. One, we haven't had those philosophical conversations. I think that's the, the primary reason. But also, every year, we build the budget based on the needs of the students that are, that are in front of us. And, and we, we base it on, on the, the, the classes that they're looking for, the types of programming that they, that they want. We, we, we base it on any number of factors for additions and reductions. And so those are all levers that we're not gonna be able to move until the time comes to actually build that budget.
Right.
I, my concern is, as the school committee, how do we support numbers when we don't have an impact to the schools? That, that's my concern to me in the next quarter.
I mean, we're recommending numbers, we're recommending numbers for the strategic planning committee to put in their report. It's not, I don't think it's lock, I don't, it's what we think we're gonna do. I don't, I don't think it's, I don't think it's locking us into-
Right, that, that's, I mean-
Yeah.
The spirit of wanting to make this the most accurate we can, I, I do think that, I don't feel that, like, this is, we're committing to this as a lockstep, this has to happen.
Yeah, but just, it's a more realistic estimation.
Right. Right, I think-
Just like if, if we put $3 million override, we wouldn't have to do it.
Sure, Chris Carl said, you know, give it a try. If you can't do it, right, then you can't do it. But
Right.
if we can do it and make this number more accurate, and make that as, as, as meaningful a report as possible, I would say give it a try. But again, if, if that isn't looking good, then I don't know what plan B is, but...
Right, yeah. I mean, I guess additional guidance I would give is like, you're all saying, you could just say, next year, we're done, we're gonna get out of it. Like, I would say particularly for this plan, just, I think, like, when we talk about the elementary school, let's, within the realm of somewhat realistic, but a little bit of worst-case scenario, you know, like, let's not go too far, about what would be like the next step from this. Because this, as we understand, already has cuts in it. You know, even this plan, which is not great.
We did back in February, we had old numbers, and we just couldn't say, what does in one year $2,001.4700,000 in cuts like, what does that do for an override? I think to understand what that would mean. So for example, if you did a one-time cut of $2.5 million next year, we do one override for $2 million, and we're done for the next 10 years. It's pretty simple, but I think we need to understand what does that $2.5 million cut mean? Even if you spread it over two years, it's still $2.5 million.
Well, I don't think anyone would, it's, I don't know.
That's what I'm saying, that, so the math is super easy to do. It's the, what's the impact of that?
Right, but I don't think anyone would suggest a $2.5 million cut in a year, right?
Why not?
Because it would ruin our educational system. I mean, I was projecting a small, over 10 years.
I totally agree. That's literally my concern, just doing the math, so that we can fill it in for a strategic plan.
Okay. Well, if-
Yeah, we can try to put something, let's see if we can get together Tuesday, Wednesday, that's fine with me.
Cancel recipes, because I'm on Tuesday.
I don't, I've, I've asked Carl, um,
Oh, you can cross that bridge.
Let's cross that bridge soon.
We have to cross that bridge before, like, 9 o'clock tomorrow morning.
Right, well, it's just John and Sasha and I, and Tom meeting. I could meet-
If you're gonna meet, if you're gonna meet Tuesday.
I could meet early-
I have a doctor's appointment, so I will not be in attendance.
Early afternoon Tuesday, early afternoon Wednesday, or Thursday, I could do. I love any of those, but I could do it.
All right, why don't you guys book that offline? So, okay, so there's the override input. Moving on to the schools, and I just wanna, I don't know if you're-
Something like that. If we don't get to resolution next week, then what?
I'll ask the strategic planning committee, then what?
If we don't get to a number, we propose, we make a proposal for what we should do?
I mean, we have, our fallback is $3 million over six years, but I think we, I'm very confident we will get to something better than that.
I think you have four choices. You've got no overrides in the plan, zero. You've got the 2.6 and 4.3, which we've been looking at for nine months, where you've got the 3, 3, and 3, which recently came to us, where you've got some new numbers.
Right.
Those are the choices you have. And, uh, I think that it would be folly to go with zero.
I agree.
Because it becomes an, becomes an unrealistic plan overall, with zero.
Yeah, so my guidance with those four options, if you said like that, would be hoping for Plan Four, right, and new numbers. But I, again, we, I'd rather go worst-case scenario. And, you know, I think that's easier to, than talk about, hey, this is worst-case scenario, but understand there'll be cuts, and we'll get better numbers, you know, as soon as we can, versus going low and then needing to be like, oh, that number you saw actually, oops, we, right, need to go above that, so.
I would say zero communicates we don't have a number yet. I feel like that's our default option.
I don't see that as an option.
You're gonna go with zero?
Yeah, that's our default. We don't have a number to publish, so we publish zeros.
So that's implying cuts?
No, that's implying, that's indicating we haven't provided a number.
That creates an expectation.
Yeah.
That creates an expectation, and we've been cautioning everybody who's giving us numbers. If you don't put forward a number, then the expectation is you don't need it.
You wanna give a higher number than a lower number. You wanna give a higher number than a lower number. I mean, you wanna overestimate rather than, than what's significantly underestimate. Well, we can talk about it, we'll get a budget subcommittee meeting together ASAP. I think it's, if I might request, we move on to the elementary building?
Okay. All right, so this also came to us. So I wanna just be clear that we have not yet, as a committee, projected a number. We had talked about numbers in terms, in terms of what has happened historically, for the purpose of comparing, uh, single schools versus consolidated schools. Um, and then the placeholder that was in the plan was what the strategic planning committee took from 2018 and escalated it. And we felt, I believe the words we used were directionally correct. Since that time, as recent as a month or so ago, Hamilton-Wenham next door, um, came up, they're, they're working on a consolidation project similar to ours, and their number is outside of the numbers that we had said that's directionally correct. So, Dr. Blake took a look at that and updated the recommendation.
I did. I, I looked at, I looked at the Hamilton-Wenham project. Um, there, it's, it's coming in, uh, at 147 million, 142 now. Um, I, I, our building would be a little bit bigger than that. Um, I said 150 million was the number that I sent over. Um, I think that's more accurate than what's currently in the plan. It seems to me that that may, in fact, be a little high, but I don't, I don't, I would rather go with that number. Um, we don't know, um, demolition costs. They, they were carrying a lot of money for demolition and, um, and site work, like, 10 or 12 million dollars, a lot. Um, I don't know that we would fall in that range, but I, I felt, I felt comfortable giving that number, because it certainly is a lot, it's gonna cost, we know, a lot more than the 102 that was, was in there, uh, prior. So I felt comfortable putting that number in as a placeholder. And again, I talked about the timing, we would be asking for that, part of that, to your point, um, in 2029, and so that 150 million would have to be sort of, uh, extrapolated to-
Nanced in 2030 and 2031, 50/50.
Right.
To answer your question, Charlie.
And that's, and that's the total amount. That's not taking off the percentage that we would get from MSBA.
That's right. The plan automatically takes off, I think it's, Kate, remind me, is it 45% or 40%?
Forty, forty. Sorry, I'm trying to-
It's, we use the old percentage.
Forty, it's forty, is what we use. Yep.
That's fine.
Yep.
So I'll go back to my question from earlier. Would, and I don't know what you're presenting to town meeting, but would it be more clear for readers to see, is, yeah, under the 2025 project estimate, it says 150. Would you wanna put the number that's actually going to, the town's gonna be paying for?
If you look at the detail, there's a, there's another column in the, in the, the model, which isn't shown on that summary sheet. If you look at the detail, there's a, there's another column in the, in the model, which isn't shown on that summary sheet, which itemizes the MSBA contribution, and so the, the borrowed amount is it's taken care of in the model.
Okay, I get, yeah, so again, whatever you're gonna put together, I just hope that that number is loud and clear, you know. Again, as much as we know that this is a loose guess, it's a, as Dr. Blake said also, worst case scenario, but gives us buffer to refine as we actually start working with the MSBA, which won't happen till July. Thoughts on that number?
Good to me.
Okay, I'll just say that I did a little research on my own, and I looked at the only other school in the last couple of years that was in a similar enrollment, to ours was in December of '23, New Bedford, enrollment of 760, the cost was 119. And then there are several schools in like the 300 range over the last year or two, and they're a little all over the place. One is, well, there, one is 89 million, and then one is up to 108 million. So, everything is on the up and up in the last couple of years. Okay?
Makes sense.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great, that was quicker. Um, part three of this conversation.
Part three.
Explain this, ask Kate.
Sure, so as I think, I tried to outline at our last meeting, the other thing the Strategic Planning Committee wants us to provide input on, as the other boards have, the finance committee and the select board, on sort of spending to hollerances for both year-to-year increases and total increase over 10 years. And so, I, I haven't, the last Strategic Planning Committee meeting, we talked about the report, and instead of sort of recommending, we do this, this, and this project, we're gonna sort of focus the report around recommended, recommending to the select board and the other boards, sort of spending thresholds to try to manage these projects within. So I know this committee had originally sort of pushed back and not wanted to give those numbers, because we didn't feel comfortable weighing in, we felt it was a little bit out of our lane, et cetera. But since now at that last Strategic Planning Committee, it seems like the report's really gonna revolve around that. And because our projects drive so much of the strategic plan, they gave us pushback, you know, they really want our input on this. And if we don't give it, we're sort of losing the opportunity to weigh in. So say the other boards give a threshold of, we don't want Texas to go up more than $500 a year. But our school costs $800 a year to the tax bill, so does that mean? And, and we don't have the opportunity to, we should have the opportunity and take the opportunity to weigh in, even if we feel it's out of our lane and a little bit uncomfortable, to weigh in on what we feel. You know, we're elected officials, so we have, you know, we, we have a say in this, and we should be able to, to give some inputs into this. So they are looking for individual inputs from us, not sort of like a school committee collective number. So if you look on this memo that Jim Engel put together for us, and is in your folder, and also printed out next to you, we could sort of walk through, maybe if you look at page two in the back, it outlines the school projects, and these have sort of the new numbers. So this includes the new elementary school number we just discussed, the new override numbers we've just discussed, which we now may revise, but that's sort of what's in here now. So this sort of top graph with all the, this is all of the municipal related, this is all the school projects minus the overrides, and the overrides are in the bottom. And you can see the tax impact. So, for example, the Ipswich Middle School High School boiler will cost taxpayers about nine bucks a year. Ipswich Middle School VRF system will cost taxpayers $67 a year over the lifespan of the bond. So those are good for us to know, so when we're looking at the other sheet of paper in front of you, which is the survey, which I know you've seen before, you know, if you're saying, for example, you're comfortable with a thousand dollar maximum year-to-year increase, we could sort of see what would fit in that. Oh, what else do I wanna go over? I also wanna point out on the last, I don't know if it's page six or, yeah, page six, the last page has the charts with sort of all of the investments, right, because we don't only, this tax impact isn't just for school projects, it's for all the projects, or all the, all the things we think we can fit within the spending limits we come up with. Jim, do you wanna walk any, through anything else before we sort of start to talk about how to fill this out?
Yeah, and, and again, this is to try to get a preference for what you think the community would be willing to spend over this, restricting it to the first 10 years, what would the community be willing to spend? What would they be willing to tolerate in terms of a year-to-year increase? So there were, there were two things, and, and we, we use this in, in looking at some scenarios at strategic planning. In other words, what projects could we fund that would meet some of the limits that are shown on this? And if you go to page six of what I sent around, the left-hand charts, the two left-hand charts, the top chart is the single-family residential impact from all of the projects, all 62 projects that are, that are, that are on the plan. And the arrows in the numbers on the side, you can see, those were the pollings from the finance committee and the school committee. So that, most of the finance committee and school committee said that something of the order of a $2,800 increase in taxes by 2035 seemed to them to be what the community might tolerate. But of course, the total adds is $4,000 for all of the projects, so that something has to, something has to get. And if you look at the, the, the lower right-hand chart, that's the year-to-year increase that would be seen by all of the projects. And that most of the committee members, seven out of the 13 that were polled, said that a year-to-year increase of $500 was kind of the number they would like to see scenarios built to. Now, if you go back to two, to, to page two, Kate asked if we could sort of break out all the school, just the school, just the school projects, and that's what's shown on page two. And if you look at the, again, the lower right-hand, recognizing that seven out of the mine votes from the school, from the finance committee and select board said $500 was kind of the limit that, that they would like to see scenarios built to. We've got three problems just from school projects. In 2028, that's the three million dollar, the new three million dollar override ask. 2030, that's a combination, and the number is off the chart. As you can see on the lower, the lower left, it's almost $1,350 increase that year in taxes. And that's a combination of the first year borrowing of the elementary school, the override, that's coincident with it, and the $6 million IVF system for the new school, high school. And that's what's driving 2030. When you get into 2031, that's the second, that's the second borrowing for the elementary school project. So that's what these charts are meant, meant to provide. Otherwise, it's just a sea of numbers. And it kind of gives you a visual idea of what's going on. Keep in mind that if, if all of the projects were, were funded, as, as in 2029, the total impact across the community would be something like $5,000, 60% of which is schools. 60% of which is schools. So we, we, we we really feel that without some guidance of the same form that we've seen from the finance committee and from the select board, we're only representing two-thirds of the available opinions. So the, the ask tonight is to take a look at what's been given to you on a sheet and check off some numbers. What do you think is a reasonable, tolerable year-to-year increase in, in spending? Or year-to-year increase in taxes? And what is the cumulative increase in taxes in 2035? And there's a blank space, if you think none of those numbers are what you think they should be, put in your own, as some members of the finance committee and some members of the select board have done.
And do you want both? It's not pick one or the other, you want both? And can?
And the year-to-year increase is not, you don't take 10 times that to get to the other number. You know, it's recognizing that there are some years that are gonna be minimal increases, some years are gonna be large increases. It's really the, 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 the large increase year-to-year that we're kind of asking for some input on. And then of course, if you, if you sum up all of those increases, what's that final number in 2035?
And can you explain the difference between, for both the page two and six, the difference between the left and the right? I understand them by row, but the columns, I'm sorry, by the row, what makes them different by row?
The, uh, let's go to chart two, or to page two.
Page two.
The difference between the top two, the only difference there is I've indicated on the right, the same number, same chart, but on the right, I've indicated where the other boards have voted.
The right one is a little blown up.
Okay.
But the, but the top left and the top right, I think, are the same.
Okay.
The right one's blown up, because I had the same question, I just figured it out. The right one's blown up and has the numbers from the boards.
Yep.
On the bottom, there is a difference, and again, it's in the x, or the y-axis. The y-axis on the left goes to 1,600, the y-axis on the right goes to 800. So it gives some visibility to, you know, that, that big number in 2030 is really at $1,300 increase in that year, that one year, $1,300 increase in taxes. And then on the right, I just simply changed the, the y-axis scale to give a little more visibility to the lower ones.
Okay. And in your report, like, what is the narrative around this gonna be? Like, we could say a number, but if, like you said, some years might be at that number, some years might be below, some years might be above.
Pick the maximum number, you know, what, what do you think the maximum number should be? What do you think?
I'll let you know.
Well, this is really the essence of this whole project, is to put together these scenarios that represent sort of the collective wisdom of the boards.
Jim, the, so the av, the yearly average for 10 years is $409. So to Diana's question, if we indicate 350, $200, how do we indicate which ones should be cut so that we're not exceeding that dollar amount?
We're not asking you to go into the project list. We're asking for some guidance for those who will create scenarios, which may or may not be acceptable to the schools. May not be acceptable to the select board. But to give some guidance to how we can build scenarios for consideration.
Who's building the scenarios?
Right now, the Strategic Planning Committee.
But they're examples, they're not recommendations necessarily, they're examples of how these projects could be managed within the, the recommendations from the committees. They're not like, we should do scenario one. It's like, here are some examples of how we can live within this.
Does that get published in your report in the spring? Just not. So the only thing that gets published in the report in the spring is the, just the list with the dollar amounts associated to them? Not any of the charts with the scenarios?
And I, I should have sent it around, I didn't. One of our meetings, we actually built a scenario that started off with the projects that could not be slipped in time, that were, you know, being dictated to us, the elementary school, the town wharf pump station, there might have been one or two others. And then said, okay, well, we're meeting the, we targeted.
They have it. I emailed it to everybody March 2nd, the five scenarios, right? I'm sure they have.
It was, it was, it was a progression to showing how to use the model. To start with those things you can't move, and then on a basis of some indication, mostly from the finance committee, because they went through a prioritization. Remember, we had made a request that the Big Eight, give us some, some, some notion as to what your priorities are with respect to the Big Eight. The only, the only information we got was from the finance committee on that request. And so we used that to sort of build this, build these scenarios. Up to a point where I think we had, I don't know, Kate, remember, it was maybe 13 or 14 projects out of the 62?
Yeah, I think, we, we think it was eight, and then we added five, so 13 sounds right.
That met the $500 a year, more or less, increase in taxes and the $2,800 total impact by 2035. And there was a little bit of room left.
Right, but those were old numbers. But those were old numbers.
Those, those, those were, they were old numbers, and they'll probably push a limit. That same scenario would push a limit.
Right. Could I ask a question? Did you, I know you, you, in your memo at the beginning, said you, you basically split the cost of the elementary school building over two years. Have you run that by anybody to know if that's actually feasible, or is that just sort of a?
That's typically the way the treasurer does with large projects.
So it's been done before, it's not like a?
On some projects, they'll parse it even finer. Like if it's a three-year project, and they'll get one single borrowing authorization and then borrow.
Chunks, okay.
So the half-half is.
So it's something that's, that's been done before, and it's not unusual, okay. So I just wanna remind the, oh no, sorry.
Since you're on that point, the only other thing that this differs from typical borrowing in the town, these are all level debt borrowings. The town on smaller projects tends to do level principal borrowing. So those, they, they, level, uh, level, uh, level payment borrowing is like your mortgage. You sign up for 20 years, and it's every, every month it's the same number. Whereas on, on a lot of projects, the treasurer will, will borrow with level principal payments. So that first year, you pay like 1/20th of the total borrowing, and then it, it and we've, just for simplicity, and to, essentially makes a project more expensive in the early years than, than a, a, a level payment. And we as a, as a Strategic Planning Committee decided to go level payment. Makes your projects cheaper in the early years, more expensive in the longer years, costs you a little bit more in borrowing over the term. But it's all out here, it's all out of your money, which, you know, you can do a net present value, perhaps that's on the bottom of page five. Present value of, in 2035, on the 58th of August, assuming a 3% discount, it was $1,300. So, but, anyway, those, those are details. So what we're looking for is for you to check off a couple of boxes, write in some numbers of your own.
Right.
Basis of the information that's been provided.
Jim, what I can't get past is if I say in the left column, maximum year-to-year increase should be $500. I can't get past, it seems like a cause and effect between the left column and the right. So if I say $500 year-over-year increase, the cumulative increase to-
That's the absolute. If you look at page two of the handout.
It doesn't matter, yeah.
Look at page two on the handout. Look at the bottom charts. See that in some years, virtually no increase, and in other years, like in 2030, there's a $1,300 increase.
But then how do I, say, for example, I was going to choose in the right column, $4,000 cumulative increase in 2035. But wouldn't that mean that in the left column, my answer should be $400?
If you wanted to plot the average. Basically, take the left column, you know, take the $4,000 in 2035, divide it by 10, that's $400 on average a year. Some years, it's going to be more, some years, it's going to be less. So you can put down 750, for example, in 4,000. That's not, that's not, that is not a non-secret. That makes sense. All you're saying is, give me a plan that, at the end, doesn't cost me more than this much money, but in any given year, doesn't increase my taxes by more than seven hundred?
Yeah. Could be 700, 200, 500, 700, you know, but the total's under four.
Okay. I needed to hear it like that, too.
I did hear back from Carl Nylund. He said, "Should be okay by me." And my question was, could this, I said, I said it wrong. But he interpreted it correctly. "Could the School Committee give you revised override numbers by next Friday? Possibly by Tuesday at Strategic Planning Committee, if we can schedule a budget meeting? Would that mess up?" Report and timing for Finance Committee booklet. And he said it should be okay. We have, they have a few weeks to get the information to the Finance Committee booklet.
All right, and so the ask is for us to fill these out or give them?
I would say to Jim, tonight. Or, right? Or me, and I could compile them into an email as the liaison and email them to Jim tonight? Whatever you're more comfortable with.
Yeah.
Okay. They're anonymous, so, you know, I'm not, I'm-
Yeah.
Whatever you-
Yeah, we haven't identified individuals within the list.
Yeah. All right. Um, year-to-year. Okay? What are we circling now, or wait? Thank you for staying so late. I'm going to, would you prefer I collate the numbers? Or you collate the numbers and send them and name an email to Jim? Or would you want me to just hand him a stack of papers?
Anybody wants to hand it to Jim?
We're passing down.
Really took a good night's sleep. Any other questions for the strategic plan?
Thank you very much.
Can Jim sit down?
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Since we are in session, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn the Strategic Planning Committee. Great moves.
Second.
In addition, do we stand adjourned?
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much.
Okay. I was hoping Charlie could give his report.
I request a motion to break.
I know.
Yeah, I would.
Motion to-
Recession.
Recession.
Louis by Jenny?
Second.
By Jen on favor? Okay, and we will return to open, we're exiting open session. We'll return to open session in about five minutes when we call back to order. There's no surprises, you know, this is going to be a big meeting.
That's a good goal. Let's keep it to 35 minutes, we can do it.
We are calling back to order at 10:26. Okay, so obviously, we are significantly behind. We have a little bit more to get done. So we'll keep that in mind.
First up is Superintendent's report, I'm just, you want to-
Sorry to interrupt you, I'm wondering, we let Charlie go first?
No.
Do you want to?
I'm fine, I mean, I don't know, I'm down, could have been until like 11:30, 12. Okay. I'm a high school kid, like, I don't know what you guys think.
I'm going to-
Yeah, I'm going to be at 9:30.
So I'm just, my report is now in your folders, so I don't-
Yes, thank you.
Read the entire thing. It's been a couple of weeks since our last meeting. A lot went on. The one thing I do want to highlight is, or a couple of things I'll highlight. A lot of the work the last couple of weeks has certainly been around the budget. I did another Swampscott building tour with the FinCom and district staff. We toured the elementary school once again with Jamie Fay, Emily Smith, and Ken Swenson from the FinCom, and then Amy Sullivan and Alicia Thomas from Winthrop, and Adam, and Louise McHugh from-
Doian.
Doian. So we had great conversation, lots of good questions asked, and I think they, everybody walked away with having had a great experience there, so I think that was, that was good. The other, the other big thing is I, we, the Wellness Committee, we've met again. We've been having some back and forth with the Pittsburgh State and the, the folks that did our action plan with us. And so we were finally able to get that all sorted out, and I'm happy to report that we finished all of the revisions on the plan. And we sent that back, the draft, back off to Allison Doak, our coach. So I anticipate we'll have another meeting or two with her, and then eventually talk about next steps. And then the last thing I'll highlight is, there's been, you know, some press recently about the roof, the Doian roof leaks. You know, as you know, we had several classrooms with some ceiling leaks that, you know, this was back when we had the, like, three weeks ago, when we had the, still the cold weather and the ice dams. What we believe was happening is that the ice dams were causing the water to get up underneath the flashing. So it wasn't necessarily the roof itself leaking, but the water got up under the flashing and came down into the decks and then wa, sort of ran across the beams. So we've got, all of the classrooms except one are up and running. We've got an issue with that one classroom in that we've had to move it to another location. We moved some folks around in that building. That work is going to be a little bit more extensive, because what we found was that in that particular room, they, they put carpet on top of carpet. And so when the carpet all got wet, it seeped through the next layer under that. And under that layer is asbestos tile, we believe. So we're going to have to abate that. So that's going to take some, some doing to repair that classroom. Because obviously, it's all got to come up and all go back down. So, so we're working on that and working on pricing. We filed an insurance claim on it, so we're, you know, we've done what we needed to do. I don't have a timeline as far as when that'll be completed as a project. Just to update folks on that. I'll stop there.
Can you expand just quickly on the Georgetown enrollment? What was the-
Yeah, so there's, so we're looking together, you know, Georgetown has, has, you know, some budgetary issues that they're looking at. You know, we're looking at a number of North Shore school districts, you know, with declining enrollment. And I sat on the, on the outside looking in. They're trying to figure out how they can work together better, you know, to meet the needs of all their kids, so that they're not having to necessarily cut programming and things. So they're, they're working, they're trying to see how they can work closer together.
That's affecting them across all grades?
Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, thanks. So next up is Subcommittee Working Group and Liaison Reports. I think we kind of have to go through communications.
We had a community forum, you want to talk about that or hold it? The office hour thing, wait?
What's everybody's, like, hard stop 11? I think we can-
I mean, I just lose ICAM, so it'd be nice.
Yeah, but I mean, also reasonably, if you want to go home. All right, let's go into it, go ahead.
Yeah, that was just a little discussion. All right, so quickly, if it's more, let's take three minutes on it, five minutes on it. I brought up last time, based on some of the topics coming up in School Committee and feedback from residents looking for more of a forum for a discussion. Felt like it's hard, just at public comment, to share, either to get questions answered or to have just a little bit of that work. My suggestion is, and there's a document in there that outlines sort of the norms for it, but essentially, it's, let's try for the month of April, or we could do May, but try for the month of April, for 20, 30 minutes before our School Committee meetings on Thursday, just one or two members of the School Committee would be here early to have that, to have that conversation with residents, should anybody show up. We are not at a quorum, it does not represent the School Committee. It is an alternative to how we brought up coffee at Zoomies. But because it's before the School Committee meeting, I think it's a closer connection. So people that either don't feel comfortable coming and making public comment on camera or aren't getting with any, that would be an alternative. The recommendation is to try that just for the month of April. So basically, we would do it twice. If there were one or two people to be here at 6:30, we would notify the town that we're here and open to it, see how that goes. If they go successful, successfully, if we have people show up, then we talk about whether we continue. Just try it for two meetings. That would be the proposal for the month of April. Thoughts, questions about it?
I think it's a good idea, and I like the norms. I just want to decide who does what, because we are all driving little people around, and I just don't want to be told the night before I have to come.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's a great point.
You know, if we schedule it out, I'm all on board.
Yeah, that's a great point. Other thoughts?
I think it's great, especially to beta test it.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, I like, I like, as you said, I like the spirit of it. But I think we'll, I know.
That's good.
I think it'll, it'll be good because it'll, it will, you know, figure it out how if someone mentions it before a meeting, do we bring it to that meeting that night, or, well, no, because it's a set agenda.
I think in general, no, but yeah.
But yes.
I think it would be similar to if you personally got an email, it informs you for whatever topic we're talking about tonight. It would be the same kind of thing.
Yeah.
There is not the expectation that you recap that conversation in the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
I like it. That's good.
Any other thoughts?
I just wanted to, in the norms, and I don't know that we necessarily need to post these, but obviously they're available. I'd like to be, just add something. If you ever will not reach a quorum, and I would just like to specifically state, you know, we will not violate the open meeting law. And I just think we all need to be very clear, like, anything, obviously, not a quorum, cannot violate the open meeting law, but also, you know, we can't make, even if we love an idea, like, can't make promises. To be like, our, you know, allegiance is primary to everybody, but like, we have to talk about it in this committee first, you know? So just listening, engaging, but not overpromising, you know, speaking for ourselves as individuals. And then, I think to your point, Jenny, if something comes up that we want to talk about, then it would have to get put on the agenda. If it falls in something that's already on the agenda, then it would, just like any other feedback, it would be, we might bring it up or we might say that, you know, it doesn't fit where we're going.
Okay, so I'm hearing just, yes, in general, update the norms. That was maybe meant for us, but I like the idea of publishing. I like how you open the public comment with the specific statement. That'd be good for us to have too, to make people aware of. And from a coordinating perspective, after this, I'll, maybe I'll shoot a note and see who could cover each meeting, and that way we're way ahead of time on scheduling. Does that sound okay?
Yeah, we'll give it a two, we'll at least try the first two, and then in second meeting in April, we can recap.
Yeah, see how it goes. Do we feel like we want to keep going for May, but make a decision then? Yeah, that's the idea. Just do it for those two. Okay, cool. Thank you. Alms, the years, your newsletter is in there. Topics, super quick. Update on budget.
I left three comments. I think they're pretty minor. So take them or leave them.
I think I incorporated all of them.
Thank you.
Thank you for those. Update on the building project, just because we've been keeping consistent, basically like, nothing happened till July eligibility, feasibility, but you should just know. We had a section in there about FAQs and some things we're gonna publish. We're not ready to do that, so we'll hold that a month. I have a blurb in there about this new opportunity for community discussion that we just discussed, so I'll leave that in there. I'll, I see some notes. I'll tweet the language in it to be more clear. Go ahead, yes.
Reminds me, you had put in here that it would take place in the ensemble room. I actually would recommend it doesn't take place in the ensemble room because, like, I think maybe in the hallway. So let's say you and Kate are doing it, you're over there, but I can still come in the ensemble room and get myself set up.
No, we don't hit it, hit a quorum by mistake. Okay, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And then, again, just referencing in this, like, mirror of the other thing, like, we're not revising the open meeting law.
We'll be more, we'll be very intentional and specific with the language. I see your note there about the open meeting laws. Absolutely. A note about the goal, goals review we did with the school committee and superintendent. I prepared a section on talking to your kids about the danger of vaping, keeping with the spirit of every single month, we've got something about safety with the call to action. Since they were nice enough to join, I emailed both principals to say, here's what's in here. If you have an alternative suggestion or anything else you specifically would like me to call out, let me know, incorporate that. But this is something I think let's, like, keep reinforcing it. So this may be something we keep coming back to. Yeah.
Can you, to tie it all together, like, just make quick mention that came on the twentieth and that, you know, some things that they're, like, they're having a speaker come, they're looking to get more detectors. Just a couple of things that tie it specifically to.
Yeah, I think that's good too. It also gives it some context to, it's something important to schools, it's not just a random one. Okay, yeah, I will add that. And then our normal roundup of activities and district events. So a couple of you shared some feedback. I'll incorporate all that. Anything else? Well, this will get published next week already?
No.
No.
Next week is last.
Would we do, so would we go the twenty-fifth? Otherwise, it's going April first. So, yeah, we'd go the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Okay, so I will finalize it by the, by Monday. Cool, thanks, everybody.
Okay. Thank you. All right, I know elementary group met. Is there anything that needs to be presented tonight, or should that wait till next?
We discussed the FAQs and updating the website. We're gonna hold that to next month. We're not gonna do it right away. We'll talk about next month.
Okay, great. And then, any liaison reports that are pending?
Turf, Fieldhouse met just yesterday. Just real quickly, they're trying very hard to spend the money that we gave the extension on from the pain grant to start the project or that portion of the project to get the utilities out to the location. And that they would have, this is all dependent on a pro bono architect's plans. So there's a little bit of a race to get those plans done. But by the end of June, they would have a more complete full budget estimate for the project. And from there, I emphasized the fundraising begins to finish it out.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Okay, see, we can do this, guys. High school report. Thank you for waiting with us.
Of course. So, again, vaping, still a big issue. I want to reiterate that it is drugs being used in school, sold in school, bought in school, consumed in school, and they have serious side effects, not only for the individual users, but also secondhand. Secondhand THC hasn't been well documented, especially in its E-form, electronic vaping form. Vaping secondhand hasn't really been looked into either, but the CDC found that eighty percent of illegal THC vapes and vapes with nicotine contain harmful substances such as cyanide, fentanyl, pesticides. And considering that most students buy their vapes, I imagine, off of Snapchat and Instagram. I don't know how legal they are. It's like China mystery juice, and I can't imagine it's good to be inhaling it or to breathing it out near their people. And the vape detectors, while a great idea, it's being funded through a grant, which objectively looks like a capital improvement and not an enrichment to learning. And so I don't know how the pain committee is gonna reflect on that. And I don't think it should be counted on to, to pass. I, I, I'm all in favor of vape detectors, but, I mean, it just, from the sound of it, it does not look like it would fit the grant's criteria. But I don't know, not the whole committee. So the school needs to take a step up, obviously. Education is needed. I strongly suggest we emphasize the education in the elementary school and middle school, especially as kids are vaping, like freshmen coming into high school are vaping, which I didn't notice my freshman year, but I see freshmen vaping now. I suggested to Principal Mitchell that we have substitute teachers actually check in between the classes or have a teacher who has a free block just pop in once between the bathroom, because it's really, really prevalent in between the passing period. And I know they have substitute teachers, and if a substitute teacher is two or three minutes late to class, I don't think that's a huge deal compared to a normal teacher, because they don't even, they don't have a lesson plan to prepare for. They're just presenting what the other teacher already made. And so I, I would really emphasize actual teachers going to the bathroom in those passing periods and seeing the crowd of kids vaping and smoking. And it's gone on so much. Since I joined student government, my sophomore year, there's not been a single meeting gone by without vaping being mentioned. And I'd had a lot of meetings about this. So it's a really big issue. I would love to see it decrease all, it's only increased since I've been here.
Well, I think it's interesting you bring up how, how often it comes up.
Yeah.
I've heard it in the same way. It stood out to me, sort of the, the comment about the culture of, it seems to, it's the worst kept secret. Everyone knows who's doing it. I think you should consider in those meetings, it, it keeps coming up, but everyone seems to know who it is, but they're not taking that next step. I think that's something that the students themselves can, can do to drive and shift the culture of they're covering up even though it's bothering.
Yeah, I, I mean, it's, it's tough to say, to rat people out. I mean, it's just, it's a really big culture. People don't want to do it, especially when it's such a small school, when you have, you know, that kid's on the football team, that kid's on the hockey team. If I rat him out, there goes his hockey season. There goes our hockey season. Basketball, same thing. That's the big issue you run into. And I personally don't think it's on students to inform on the other kids. I, I think that's very dystopian. I think it, it doesn't rely on, on them to do it, but that's just, I respect it.
There are anonymous ways to do it. I, I worry it's enabling that.
Right, so, and so the anonymous ways we talked about, we were worried about retaliation. So if you have a group of four or five kids, you can anonymously rat out this one person who might not be vaping at all, and then there's consequences, or they get blamed for doing something that they're not actually doing. Because you can get a group of, you know, four or five kids that don't like this person. Oh, Abby was so mean to me. Oh, let's all report her for vaping. That's, we, I didn't really notice it with the boys, but if you were the female, also members of student government, said that might be an issue. And I wouldn't want that to happen either. The quiet corner controversy. So the middle school, the this quiet corner, and the cafeteria, it upset a lot of students. I've never had so many kids come up to me and be like, what's happening? Tables got moved. Kids weren't allowed to sit where they usually sit. But I was told that a few kids came up to me, and they, they raised some interesting points, which I'll reiterate. Why place a quiet corner in the loudest room in the school? The location isn't kind of productive. The cafeteria already struggles with seating shortages. Removing tables has exacerbated the issue, forcing students to sit on heaters and on the ground. One of the major justifications for the phone ban was to encourage social interaction, yet removing tables contradicts this goal. Their replacement of two tables with chairs and a rug, items that high schoolers are not even allowed to use, is impractical. Other spaces in the school, such as the library and bright rooms, already provide as a quiet space and area for students to have lunch. The quiet corner lacks supervision, which can lead to real break and potential misconduct. I already saw vandalism happening to it two days ago. It's, there's a rug and two chairs and, yeah, I don't know what, who made that decision to put it there, but I don't think it was received as well as it should have been received. I did a survey on Tuesday, and I got about eighty responses. So it's about sixty percent of the student body. Some key findings, more than half the students surveyed responded to vaping affects their ability to use the school bathrooms. A quarter of all students surveyed said that vaping significantly impacts their decision to use the bathroom, meaning they don't use the restroom because of vaping. Many students suggested having teachers check in or honest reporting, but those are two options. And then more concerns over the quiet corner, and several, several requesting its removal or rethinking, or not having it during high school lunch and just middle school lunch. I met with the middle school, school council, and the middle school student leadership senate. It was a great time. I talked forty minutes. It's interesting how you can go back to a school you were at not too long ago, and everything's changed. And it was great to see kids and hear what they're excited about and what they love about middle school, and they wish elementary school had, that had, that middle school had, and, you know, vice versa. So some field trips that are coming up. Bodeborg is right around the corner, or Bodeborg already happened. I remember doing Bodeborg, and I am glad they're doing it too. They did a Christmas carol, which I also remember going to, and the ecology school, Poland Springs trip will be happening this spring. One point of issue that students did say is that their lunch is really, really early. I think it's at ten something in the morning. And I think that's a tough time for, for anybody really to eat lunch, especially when you arrive at seven forty-five, you're eating lunch at ten in the morning. And kids were asked, kids were asking if there's any way to have a snack time. I know the lunch schedule is, it's a shared space between the high school and the middle school. And so kids were asking, is there an opportunity to have, you know, a ten-minute snack break in the afternoon for them to eat? Which seems understanding. I mean, I didn't experience that because of COVID disrupting my whole year, so it was a very different seventh and eighth grade experience for me, having lunch. But I can understand how eating so early in the morning would be disruptive. Flexible seating. Some kids said that sitting for long periods of time can, is kind of rough, sixth graders especially. You know, coming from the elementary school, and you have much longer recess, more physical activities. I can see that. And they were wondering if there was different seating options available. And then one question I asked them was, what do they love about the middle school that they didn't have in the elementary school? And what's their favorite thing about school that they're doing so far? And unanimously, kids said two things, and that was when their period to do art, you know, the extra curricular.
What I need.
Basically. And the kids loved it. So they said they wish they could, you know, if you like art, you know, like, I want to do art. Like, if I don't like this, you know, I don't really want to do the other things all the time. And they really loved it, and they said they're doing great things there. Middle school clubs, kids really like that they have more club and extra curricular opportunities in middle school than they did in elementary school. Meeting with kids after school, things like that. The annual sports, kids also, they really enjoy the annual volleyball and inner school sports. They really like doing that. I will say, I reached out to the elementary school principals to see if I had time. Could be me, for me, me with the elementary school student leadership. My request was rejected, and it was said that it's outside of my realm of responsibilities, which I don't feel to be the case. I feel like as a student representative, my role is to represent all students. And I know there was concern that I'd be looking for issues, and I would counter that, like, yes, that's what I'm doing. That's what your local representatives are doing. You're looking for issues. When you call your congressman or your local rep, you don't tell them, oh, I love this, I love this, you know, nine out of ten times, it's, you know, what can I do about this? You know, I want to improve this, or questions about this and that. And that's how I kind of see myself as a person that kids can approach, ask questions to, or say like, hey, you know, I really don't like this. I really don't like that. And it's tough for students, especially younger ones, to go to the administration or teachers to say that, because, you know, most teachers are so much above them. I remember being a freshman and, or first grader, and I had Miss Tumacki. He was a very, very tough person to approach. But, you know, at summer camps, whatever, at babysitting, babysitters, I could always approach them much easier. So I think it is important that I meet some students. I'd, I think it'd be beneficial to see if they have any, anything they would like to ask or concerns they have. That's just my insight.
Are you, are you arranging something?
I can.
Okay.
And, yeah, that's about my report.
All right, thank you, Charlie. All right, no finance report. School choice.
In your packets this evening, once again, I spoke with the administrators. We did make some adjustments at both elementary schools and opened up, they're willing to open up some additional seats. The middle and high school are not recommending opening any school choice seats at any grade level for the, for the next year. If necessary, the middle and high school would consider additional budget reductions instead of opening choice seats.
Uh, yeah, go ahead. So why would they, would the high school, middle school choose, consider budget cuts overtaking a, a school choice?
They feel that strongly about not having additional choice students coming in to the district.
Right, but is there a reason? I mean.
You don't know who you're gonna get.
Well, right, I just, yeah, okay, so, okay.
They would rather not have.
Past history has said, okay, we need to figure out what's the, okay, okay. So we have recommendations in the folder.
Correct.
I'm open to, you know, obviously clarifying questions. We want to get it all out. You know, it seems, this is an up, an increase from what we have seen, the benefits of the lower years or that, where they stay in district and you carry that, that money each year, so.
There's, there's no guarantee that we're gonna even fill all these seats, but this is what they're willing to, and it felt comfortable opening, given their class sizes and the needs of the students in those classes.
Yeah.
Seems like we historically haven't opened kindergarten.
Seems like we historically haven't opened kindergarten. But we have historically opened grade one, which I would think would be a decent opportunity for a youngster to enter a new district. Is there something specific about that grade that those students, is it a large grade?
Because there's opportunities for, for kids to go to outside kindergartens, not necessarily our programs. We don't always know what that first grade class is going to look like in terms of size, so they want to be careful about.
So our kindergarten doesn't necessarily feed to our kinder, first grade, multiple kindergartens feed to our first grade. That makes sense, okay. Right, we might get, yeah, this is private. Makes sense, okay, thank you.
But only Dianne has first grade open. Not Winthrop.
Right. I mean, just to give like a little budget perspective, we have talked about this at the budget subcommittee about, you know, choice is a revenue stream for us, not an enormous one. But it is one that historically we have been going down. Like we're graduating a lot more kids with choice than we're sort of adding into the pipeline, which maybe it's okay, but it's just something to think about. So if, if sort of dwindled the choice account over time, we can't dip into it for budgetary purposes because it won't be there, it won't be as robust. So that's just something to think about. That we've talked about at budget.
And then the flip side is, I think historically we've opened more seats than we take in too, so this is really the maximum if, if we went with these recommendations.
Yeah, and Laura, it is help, I'm assuming you pulled this together. This is very helpful, I think, to have the past few years. How many opens, how many applications, how many enrolls? That's helpful.
So, I'll entertain discussion on an alternative to what is presented or a motion, I guess for an alternative or for anything in there, unless there's further questions.
Do we vote by grade, by school, by total? Do you know how? So we would need, if we, for... But by school, so a vote per school? Okay, got it, sorry, I just didn't know how that.
If you're going to do it, you might want to clarify the range. Because Dianne has a range, if you say as presented.
Oh, good point, yeah. So I have a question about that. Why one to two? Are we opening them or not? Yeah, if somebody applies.
I think we need to pick.
We would need to, we would need to specify.
You could say, if you were to, as presented with the maximum number on the range.
Yeah, and these were presented by the principals?
Is there a motion?
I move to recommend the school, I move to approve the school choice recommendations for Dianne for two seats for first grade, two seats for third, fourth, and fifth grade.
Each, yeah.
Yep, and for Winthrop, one seat for second grade, two seats for third grade, three seats for fourth grade, and five seats for fifth grade.
Second. Okay, move by Sasha, second by Jenny, further discussion, all in favor? Passes, was not twenty minutes, excellent, okay.
Yeah, we're only an hour and forty-five minutes behind.
If we push off the capital plan review, does that impact anything?
We're not voting on it, are we?
I think it was just to answer questions because the select board is voting on it.
Has anything changed since the last time we looked at it?
Permission to go a couple minutes after eleven.
I would really like to provide a brief Naresco update. That's longer than a minute. But I'll try to be less than five.
So we're not going to do capital plan?
I would like to, we're...
Oh, yeah, or you could do that.
So we didn't hit eleven, okay. So capital plan review, super quick. I'll start. I just wanted to revisit the trailer at Winthrop and just understand the cost beyond next year to our operating budget in light of the direction that we're trying to go in, which is to make cuts every year.
Yeah, I'm similar to what about the carrying cost.
So the, the question being that my estimate was a sixty-four thousand dollar cost in, in subsequent years, that the two hundred and forty thousand requested in the capital plan is effectively the year one cost for the first year lease, uh, first year of the lease rather, and to receive and install the structure. Sixty-four thousand moving forward is the cost of the lease and an estimated cost of utilities. The estimated cost of utilities is going to also be driven by what's ultimately designed in the building, like how many bathrooms will drive the water consumption, for example. But it is an estimated cost based on, on what the, what the design currently is, which is two classrooms and two bathrooms.
Okay, so that is a similar cost perhaps to, theoretically, a staff member.
Every year.
Well, not formally, sort of, I brought up in budget here, in my head, there's a mor, we have a moratorium on additional incremental spending, knowing that we're going to have to start coming down, so let's not start adding additional things. My concern is this fits into it. I reckon, I fully recognize there's a new first base and kids are in the hallway and I get that. We're adding something when we know in the coming years we're going to have to start taking away. That, that's my concern, is the, is the spend piece of it, not the, fully understand the need.
Agreed. And I also feel like the population at Winthrop was significantly higher five, six, five to ten years ago than it is now. I, I understand there are more staff members and more services being delivered and more pullouts. It's, it's just, to me, it's a little bit of a tough, it's a big dollar amount for the, for the capital plan and also for the maintenance. I have some concerns about that. And it's true, there are at least a hundred more kids at Winthrop five years ago.
We've already carved up all of the classroom space that we can to make smaller learning spaces. We are jam-packed in that building. We, this came up last year and I said there was no way we could do it last year. And we took away another classroom last year and redesigned it into three learning spaces. We're, we're flat out of room to put people.
Don't, I still, I, I, again, I understand the space need, but like the difference between, like this year, no, it's not great, it's not ideal, we know that. But like, what is going to make it that much different next year that it is going to, you know, that we are asking for this investment, also in light of what Sasha said, and potentially looking at creative ways to, if there's a possibility, to look at class sizes, configuration, different bigger picture things, it's...
I, I think that the, the space needs aren't going to go away. I think that we, we, we have a handle on the class sizes unless we change the whole configuration of the elementary district. That, that we're going to maintain, unless we greatly increase the number of kids in a class, we're going to maintain the same class sizes that we have. And the kids are, we're going to be in that building for at least another seven years. So this isn't, the space issue isn't going away. That's why this was put on the, on the plan. Understood, it, it is a carrying cost. It's in the capital plan for this first year. The carrying cost we'll, we'll look at in, in future years. And, you know, if we're, I'm just going to throw this out, I don't, I don't know that this is factual or where we'll end up, but, you know, the, we're looking at these being preschool classrooms potentially. We can use preschool revolving account funding to support that in, in the out years.
Are we signing a five-year lease with it or anything, or like a one-year lease, or how does it, like, say in a couple years, we don't need it? So we're committing to having it for...
So we just talked about school choice and more seats in the Winthrop. Would that have been some, I mean, I know that's, that would only be ten kids, but still, like, is it, no?
It's not the class size, that's the problem. We have nice low class size numbers, it's the pullout space. So you'd take a regular classroom, put it into this modular, and then create, and then take the vacant classroom and make that pullout space. But I also think relying on, I know we have the preschool revolving account, but the future of preschool enrollment is always undetermined. We just had, YMCA just opened two huge preschools, or one is going to open another one, and they just opened preschool at Bio Labs that's fully enrolled. So it's really affecting other preschools in town enrollment, and I think it's going to draw from the would-be tuition-paying preschool.
They're saying maybe there wouldn't be as many preschoolers?
That pay tuition. Again, it's, it's unpredictable, but it's something that's going on in our community that's affecting school population and revenue accounts, potentially.
I mean, I'm more comfortable with it if we could find a, a way to, I don't know. I don't know, I'm torn.
Someone also came up with this suggestion, I don't know if that's relevant to this, I would say, is do the half-day preschool, so there's the same amount of kids, but just one in the afternoon, one in the morning?
So that was done years ago, and when it switched to a longer day, it became more fully enrolled because it's really hard to be a parent and have your kid go to preschool for two to three hours. They'll seek other ways, so.
I'm just saying, that's, that's an alternative, is that you wouldn't get as many people who want it, but we also don't have the room for everybody who wants it. I don't know which way, the right way to go is.
I think you would definitely lose kids.
Well, I think the way to think of it is that, like this, we're talking about absolutely needing to make cuts in the future, so this is going to be like, potentially, another sixty-four thousand dollar cut we need if we're bringing this in. You know, we're going to have to offset that. Do you have a plan for that?
How do we offset that, is that what you're saying?
I don't have an extensive plan for that. I mean, that's unfair to ask that at this point.
The only thing I might add is that it would be a, not really a short term, but certainly a near-term expense, knowing that if the stars align with the new building, this expense would have a life of, say, the five years. So it's not a permanent add, whether we pull it out of the, or add it into the appropriated budget, or maybe, you know, one-time, one-time, well, one-time meaning five years of funding. For example, free room from the school choice, you know, allowance. We're going to likely finish this year with a million two in school choice.
Then that's, that's just school choice money. We couldn't offset other things, which we needed for, I mean.
And I would caution against, you know, really truly reoccurring costs such as salaries, right? We don't want to put people in a non-reoccurring, but this would be a relatively short term.
In those five years, we wouldn't need to offset with cuts, to, to offset the cost for this?
We would, but we don't.
I think it's too early to tell, it's too early to tell, we don't know.
But only for five years, as opposed to a teacher, it's...
It wouldn't be a permanent add to either a revolving fund or the budget. It would be a five-year cost of, now, the sixty, the lease cost won't drop, utilities will likely, so that sixty-four could be sixty-eight in year two, and seventy-four in year three, right? There's going to be a incremental growth.
Right, but we wouldn't need to offset the cost for that, those five years. You're saying if we could just tack it on for five years? Without making cuts to accommodate it?
The cost of utilities in the lease could, could very likely be absorbed by either a revolving fund or even split between the revolving fund and a net within the appropriate budget, because it's not a permanent add. Whereas a salary or an employee is, is much more of a permanent.
I'm okay with that. We don't vote on the capital plan really, do we? So it's just feedback that we're, it's not on the agenda to be voted on or any...
No, for, when we vote our warrant articles.
Oh, right, yeah.
I want to be supportive of it. I'm still uncomfortable with the implications.
I'm supportive of it. I think it's needed. I've been in that building with too many people under stairs doing things that aren't conducive to learning. So I get what everyone's saying, but I still think it's, it is needed and I take some comfort that it is not forever cost. I'm supportive of it.
Anybody else have anything to say?
I'm so torn.
We have a couple more vote weeks before we vote on the warrant articles, right? Is there any more information people need, or?
I think it was the, what is our direction going into select board's vote next week?
I don't know, that was really a, a big point they were, they were making, yeah.
So take, take either extreme. If they heard unanimously from us, we support it. If it's a certain direction, if they hear unanimously from us, we don't believe in it, it's going to set a certain direction. Important for us to have an opinion.
Or, I mean, even if we're up in the air, I think that...
Yeah, I was using the extremes, but yes.
I guess, yeah, I guess if we have more questions directed to Dr. Blake and Tom. All right, Naresco.
All right, I'll try to make this quick. So Naresco, we've heard about for a long time. It's, it is on the Springtown warrant in May without the solar carport. And so the total project cost is down to four point seven million dollars. So there's a discussion between reps from the various town boards, and I was, Dan asked me to go as the liaison to this climate residency project, which has done a lot of talking about Naresco. So the town manager, town treasurer over there, and the purpose of that meeting was really to discuss funding mechanisms, to really make it clear for town meeting how this would be best funded. So it seems like there are three options of how to fund this. We could borrow and have a debt exclusion, which would impact the taxpayers. So we'd borrow for the full amount of the four point seven million, but it wouldn't be similar to the rest of the Naresco project. There'd be cost savings, and the cost savings would be applied to the debt service. So it wouldn't be total, we don't... We don't... Depending on the... Yeah. So, but the bottom line is, that's an option. Debt exclusion with some sort of tax impact on the taxpayers. And that did not seem to get a lot of support at this meeting among the people on the three boards. There was a lot of concern about debt exclusions in general, just given all the other overrides and things and strategic plan that will be needed. So, that's one option. The other option is to try to sort of cash flow it within the town budget, essentially using free cash. And so, that option would potentially... Or would impact other things on the five-year capital plan. Because if Naresco was paid for, then other things would probably have to come off the capital plan because we can't do it all within our budget. So, that would not have a direct impact to taxpayers, that option, too. We also had a lot of talk of sort of paying for it off the top, which would, in my elementary school brain, means it shrink the pie of, you know, we get 61%-ish and the town gets the other percent. You know, the things that come off the top shrink the pie. So, that would impact our budget numbers. But it wouldn't impact the taxpayers. So, that's sort of option two. The reps from the town boards seemed more in support of this option, again, because it doesn't go to the taxpayers. The town officials were less excited about that option. There's a lot more flexibility with debt exclusion option. Option number three is a lease option, which we didn't talk a lot about because basically, if we're gonna borrow, the lease is just a lot more expensive. And there wasn't a lot of enthusiasm for that option. So, what all this means to us is... There was... Sorry. There was also a lengthy discussion about would there be... Would there need to be a ballot vote or not? If we borrowed money, there would need to be a ballot vote. If... Unless it's under the Banford bylaw, a lot of the stuff is getting very financial. But sort of philosophically, should we have a ballot vote or not? Some people thought we should have a ballot vote because it gives the taxpayers an option to vote on Naresco. They have already voted on Naresco, but this is a different project with a much lower cost without the solar carport. So, it's... Yes, it's asking the voters again. So, there's sort of pluses and minuses. And I would say the group was mixed about the need for a ballot vote. But they wanted my opinion. And I said, "I need to direct my school committee because I don't..." So, I guess my questions for you all are... How do we... Do we have thoughts on a ballot vote or not for Naresco? Do we have a feeling on debt exclusion versus cash flowing it through the budget? And then we also talked about... The conversation morphed a little bit into the ECMs in Naresco, so the energy conservation members, the projects in Naresco. Some people at that meeting were very concerned about the LED lighting in the elementary schools. So, the LED... There is... The Naresco involves LED lighting at many buildings in town, essentially all town buildings, libraries, schools, town hall. If we stripped out the elementary school LED portion, the concern is, even though the building... Even though theoretically, our new school building would be built in six years, that actually would pay off the LED lights. So, it would sort of be, you know, cost-effective to... The payback is between six and seven years, which is about the time we build a new school. However, we then would lose... The LED light bulbs last for 20 years. So, we'd lose out on those next 14 years of savings theoretically because those light bulbs would be in Doyon and Winthrop, which theoretically wouldn't be in operation anymore. So, there was some concern about that. There was also some concern about sort of the political risk of funding things for elementary schools. Non-essential things for elementary schools that theoretically are gonna be offline in six to seven years. So, I want to get feedback from this committee. How does the school committee feel about... Or what do you think about pulling the LED lighting portion out of the Naresco project? Are we okay with that? It would stay in the rest of the building? So, town hall, middle school, high school, library, fire station? I don't know.
That can happen? We can...
Yes. So, it would require... So, Rick Mitchell was also there, climate resiliency manager. I forgot him. He would need to basically... He thinks Naresco would be okay with that. He would basically need to rerun the numbers because it would... They'd be different without... It's like essentially, that's like $200,000 of the 4.7. But we'd also lose out on cost savings. So, it sort of changes it all.
Right.
But the bottom line is, it's not gonna make or break Naresco. It's still a super, you know...
Yeah.
We would get a large number of capital projects done, energy-efficient capital projects done at a reasonable cost to the town.
But I think it would be much more palatable for people to see that it's not going into the elementary schools. You know, we all hate to say that because there's so many kids that are gonna be going through there. But I think there's this, you know... People are frustrated to put more money in to elementary schools when it's not needed. So, in terms of making or break Naresco, I think it could make it because if that's removed, people might see it differently than, oh, it's just going to the elementary schools again.
Right. Other people's thoughts on that? Let's just do the pulling the LED lighting out of the elementary school buildings. Are you okay with that? Hearing general support for that?
I think, yeah. I wouldn't want to... Anything we can do to sweeten the bigger deal for people, I think is worth doing.
Yes. There's a lot of talk about the importance of sort of unanimity in the boards in supporting this project and the importance of sort of ironing out this financing before town meeting. Thoughts about ballot vote versus not? If you have any?
Given it failed last time, I think it's be appropriate to put forward a ballot vote again.
What was that, Sasha? Sorry.
First time someone's been here.
I know.
Given that it did not pass last time, I think it would be appropriate to hold a ballot vote for it.
It would be appropriate, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because I'm still not 100% sure whether it's... I mean, I remember reading that and being like, "What is this?"
Right.
And so, I don't know how many people felt that way and whether...
I think a lot.
You know? So, it would be a better feel the second time around to know whether or not that first vote was aberration or whether or not there really doesn't enjoy the support that it did at town meetings. It's enjoyed overwhelming support at town meetings. But it's important how representative is that, you know?
There's definitely a little bit of... More comfort without a ballot vote if it was going to be essentially funded through our budget.
Which would be significant, wouldn't it? If we take that out, four and a half million off the top?
Well, I mean, it's a little... It's complicated to fund it through the budget. And the town manager had concerns about the first year because you kind of need to pay for a lot upfront with like... Because Naresco would sort of do all the projects in a year. So, we need to pay for a lot upfront. So, it's my understanding, and I'm not a super finance person, but it's my understanding for the... If we cash flow it through the budget, we actually would still borrow. But we would basically use free cash in combination with the savings to pay it off.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense to fund it through free cash. I don't like...
The what?
I think it makes more sense to fund it through free cash. It's such a small amount in comparison. You don't even have to ask the town officially to borrow it at the election... At the box office or whatever, at the election booth?
Ballot.
Ballot box. And if you can fund capital improvements through free cash, you should do that. Why borrow to fund when you can do... I mean, you borrow a little bit, but just fund through free cash if that's an option.
I mean, the concern is that it's...
All town...
It would displace parts of the capital. And so, I guess, you know, it is... Does the Naresco project rise above some of the other things on the capital plan? Because it's not... It's not like we have tons of free cash, like we could do both.
Oh, well, then you're cutting stuff from the capital plan, then it doesn't make sense. But if you have excess cash, if there was four million excess cash...
No, it's not excess cash.
Okay. So, then it's not really free cash, then?
Well, I mean, it's the free cash account. It's not... It doesn't mean... Free cash doesn't mean extra cash. It's called free cash, which is essentially how we...
It's not like the free cash flow of a busy town or whatever. It's not...
Right. But that money is typically used to pay the... To fund the capital plan. So, that's how we fund the capital plan, right? And I mean, in essence. So, yes, each year. So, yeah. So, free cash is a little bit of a misnomer.
Recommend against that.
Against?
Yeah.
I mean, we spent a lot of time putting together this capital plan and laying it out over the next bunch of years. If the Naresco project is gonna take precedent and then be carving into that, then why do we even have a capital plan?
Well, I mean, it's unclear to me how much it would eat into the capital plan. I think we don't. I mean, according to Carl, the first two years of the Naresco project would cost the town $480,000.
But after savings or that's upfront cash? That's after savings, right? So, you still need to put forward?
I'm not... I'm not totally clear on that.
Actually, I don't...
I'm not totally clear on that.
On the ballot?
And it's 11:30, so I'm sort of losing my...
It's gonna be written the same. I know that that was the whole thing about it had to be written in certain ways.
Very tight turnaround to... If there is gonna be a ballot question. And the discussion was around... We would try to get the language as soon as possible if the select board... Depending on what the select board sort of decides on this on Monday. And the word "Naresco" would likely be in the ballot question. But I don't know how much leeway we have to change the wording. They have to change the wording. We don't have anything to do with it, but... Okay. So, I'm hearing support around dropping...
LED.
Around dropping elementary LEDs. Ballot question?
Yeah, I agree. Ballot question.
Ballot question?
Yeah.
Two people...
That was last time.
Right. Does anyone have concerns and would not... I would not... I'd rather not have a ballot question? So...
I'd rather not have a ballot question, but I don't... But I agree. I think the optics is that it's Naresco through the back door because it failed last time. And I think that's not a good look.
It's... Yeah. To me, it depends if we're asking the taxpayers for money upfront.
I think ultimately, it comes back to the taxpayers. Like, no matter like how it trickles down.
Right. Yeah. Other thoughts on ballot questions? So, I can just sort of get a sense of the...
I don't know. I have to think about it more. I have a thought.
I feel the same way Matt feels. I... Ditto. Which is... Which is, I think, optically, it's important if it's coming from taxpayers directly that we have a ballot vote.
And what if it's...
And if it's coming from free cash, I don't believe we don't need a ballot vote.
If you take for cash, all those other projects still need to get done. They get paid someplace else. It's still taxpayer.
Yeah.
It's just the account you take it from. One way or another, they have to get paid for, and so the taxpayers are paying for it.
Just you don't ask the town at a box, which legally you don't have to do.
I'm not saying it doesn't impact the taxpayers at all. But it's not a tax increase like a debt exclusion would be a tax increase.
Right.
I feel like this is less to do with the school committee and what the select board wants to do with their...
Totally. It's 100% up to them, but they're asking for our guidance. Because, I mean, I think because a lot of these projects... I don't think a lot of these projects impact...
So, I do support a ballot vote. And I am optimistic that with some clarity on the project and taking out some of the things that it will pass.
So, you're supportive of a ballot vote either way, it sounds like?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Matt?
Yes, ballot vote.
Either way?
Yep.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I get it right. Okay. Last thing. We did spend a lot of time discussing... Basically, Rick Mitchell's working on a breakdown of school versus town versus utility cost and savings because we want to make sure we have a really good understanding of the payback mechanism. So, for example, like, the projects aren't equal. So, say, schools get 90% of the savings because we are such energy users. Maybe with all the LED lights and weatherization and all the things this building would get, maybe the schools recognize or get 90% of the savings. Does that mean we take those savings and use it to pay off 90% of the bond? And the town... And the... Because maybe the town would get less savings. So, all that sort of... Rick needs to work on sort of the breakdown because if we get more savings, why should the town pay more... Why should we pay equal amounts of the bond back? So, all that's sort of being hashed out. Because we need to have a good understanding... And by "we," I mean you. You know, we would be taking on debt service, more debt service. And we would need to know the payback.
And that's probably what they're talking about, coming off the top?
Okay.
So, whatever savings we get throughout the usage, that would... I think there was a question that we're gonna turn around to take that, whatever savings that was, and put it back and to pay it off?
Yes.
Is that what?
That's the... Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes. No, you're right. So, I just want people to know that it's happening.
Because I know that was a question. People were like, "Is that... Are we gonna use that savings for something else?" This is the last time around. And I know the select board, they were like... I don't want to speak for the select board. My take on it was, there was a discussion if that savings was gonna be used for another capital project or if that savings was gonna be used to start paying off Naresco.
Yes.
Okay. So, what's the...
It's the latter. It would be, yeah. But it's the proportions, you know? Because...
Right.
So, that's what Rick Mitchell's sort of working on to look at. The projected cost savings. And are they cost savings to us, to the town, to the utility department? And then how would that work in terms of payback? So, that's it. I will give the information back to the select board.
What was your first financing option? What was number one?
Basically, override debt exclusion. To authorize.
There wouldn't be a payback for that, right?
By the schools? Well, we would still incur... Yes, there would be. So, we'd be authorizing... If it was a debt exclusion, we'd authorize $4.7 million. The taxpayers would hopefully support a $4.7 million bond to pay for Naresco. However, the taxpayers aren't gonna be paying all of that. They would be basically... My understanding is they'd be paying the delta between maybe some of the upfront costs and paying the delta between the costs and what the savings.
So, that would mean we wouldn't actually see savings? Because any savings we would incur, we would use to pay it back.
Correct.
Yes. And at what point is... And then we're positive, what, after 20 years?
I don't have it off the top of my head. But I think it depends. The payback for different... The payback for different things are different.
Does it make any sense?
It's at least 20 years.
So, if our electric bill goes from $100 to $90, we're giving that 10 to pay off the bond for 20-plus years?
Yes. Or would we do that? That's the... That's the... That's the, that's the, that's the model that was presented last year.
See, I didn't realize the payback, I thought the, it's paid upfront, we save that ten dollars ourselves, we're just spending ten less on that, that ten dollars goes to a teacher. That's.
No, that was not the model, and that's why I.
Okay, so a payback for twenty years.
That's why the reference to taking it off the top, because it's a townwide expense, as opposed to an expense of schools or expense of the town.
Right.
So as, as a result of the savings from all the usable buildings, it would come off the top.
At the end of the day, we pay the same each year, even though our electric bill is.
Well, we would pay, the, the electric, the, the consumption would go down.
Yes, consumption would go down, that's fair.
So there would be a lowering, I don't wanna say lowering the bill, right, because the rates will go up, but the, the consumption will go down, so therefore, we would be saving that, that piece of.
Thanks, I didn't realize the payback, I thought we just benefited from the savings.
Okay, got it.
There is none?
They didn't take it off the top, the alternative is to pay how we're paying in the budget now, because right now we're paying three debts in, as part of the operating.
Well, that's why it's a little
Right.
A little misleading. It's confusing, and, and I think Rick Mitchell doesn't like the word savings, because it's not really, it's decreased consumption. Okay.
We'll just know where the rates are gonna be.
It's a lowering of consumption, the whole carbon footprint business is getting us lower demand.
All right, so next is policy, so option one is, if you've already reviewed them, we could get through it in two minutes. If you haven't, we can hold it till the next meeting, but also knowing that they will just continue to accumulate, so I will go with the will of the committee, if we just hammer them out, or hold them off?
To get them done.
The last conversation was five minutes and it was thirty-five minutes, so let's, it's.
Did you have questions on this one?
Policy?
Yeah, did you have any, did you have any, do you have any?
I read it, I'm good.
Dan, do you have any? Yes?
I haven't done all the reading.
I can give a quick synopsis, do you want, would you feel more comfortable withholding? Okay.
Sorry.
Any business?
We will have probably double the policies at the next school committee meeting.
If people are up for a synopsis, I can do them. I feel like they're important.
We're still fine with the, with the competency determination, we still have time for that, okay. All right, so consent agenda, if the school committee to approve, meeting minutes from March sixth, twenty twenty-five, and donation in the amount of one thousand dollars from Michelle Rodriguez for the racing challenge trip to be deposited into the high school gift account.
Second?
So move second.
I'm gonna go backwards, Sasha.
That's why we're done.
Let's go Sasha, Matt, okay. I said I move, well, I said I move, yeah.
She said move too, so I just assumed you were making the motion.
Either way, yeah, I was, I don't know. Great, passes. Okay, wish you a journey.
So moved.
All right, thanks Jenny, and John, all favorit. Eight, eleven thirty-six. I don't know if they get any heavier than that, though, it's like, right? That was like the, the peak of our chaos and.
Seems like budget were down to Wednesday at five or Tuesday at five.